Oh, sorry, I was muted. I will go back to 3.1 reconvene open session at 6:02 PM. And 3.2 report of action taken in closed session, no action was taken. Okay, now we're at 4.1 correspondence. Um, with Holly. Holly, you're muted now.
Thank you. District, the superintendent's, good evening, President, members of the board, and public superintendent's correspondence regarding district business for this month. We've received, received inquiries related to COVID-19, including public use of school facilities, student relocation regarding summer school, our early childhood development center, distance learning, the distance learning survey, reopening of schools, HVAC systems, school parades, and praising our great teachers and staff for implementing distance learning. We've also received some correspondence regarding the Delmar Heights rebuild project, one regarding restroom accommodations at schools, our great schools rating, the great schools rating system, and the principal selection for the vacant position at Ashley Falls School. That completes the superintendent's correspondence for the previous month. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is item 4.2 hearing of the public regarding non-agenda items. I read this before the closed session, but just for everyone's benefit, I'll read it again. Members of the public who would like to address the governing board regarding an item on the agenda, must go to the link provided at online agenda. The link can be found on the front page of the agenda, item 1.5 to be heard regarding a closed session item, and 4.2 to be heard on an item not on the agenda, or item 5.15 to be heard regarding an item on the agendas. Please complete and submit the online request to provide public input form at the link provided. And as a reminder, once you have submitted the form and you join the meeting, please click on the raise hand function so we can find you. And if you're calling in, that's a star nine, star nine to raise your hand. This will let the moderator know that you have submitted a speaker form and would like to address the board. Please do not click the raise hand option unless you plan to address the board and have completed the request form. If you have any problems, please email Holly Palmer at hpalmer@dnusd.org. And I see that many people have signed up, so we are in good shape. So before we get started, I have a few comments. As you are all aware, over the past year and more, there have been many opportunities for public comment at board meetings. And there have been many times when the comments have been heated or directed toward the district or to individuals or organizations. And we have recently received requests to intervene, both in the public comment before the board and the subsequent characterization of that public comment in online forums. Intervening in public comment raises First Amendment issues. The First Amendment protects speech that some people would find objectionable. And board members are not allowed to decide what is acceptable and what is not. I would like, however, to encourage you to choose to practice civility. This board has shown commitment to encouraging public input and engagement. While public comment is technically limited to 20 minutes on any topic, the board has consistently agreed to allow each member of the public to speak for the full three minutes. Please understand that the board cannot respond directly to public comments, and for non-agenda items, the board can only refer the matter to staff or future agendas. So I am turning to you, members of the community, to ask you to bring your best selves to debate of public issues. Passions run high because so many people care deeply about our kids, our schools, and our community. I am grateful that it is the case, and I appreciate that there can be many different opinions on any one issue. I have said many times that these varied opinions tend to lead to better results. So let's demonstrate civility and show with our words and actions that we value both free speech and constructive public debate. We will now call for members of the public who have requested to address the governing board regarding, regarding items that are not on the agenda. So the first is Dana Kizlatis, followed by Mary Ann Grozner.
Okay, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Okay. Good evening. I learned the hard way how private law firms that school boards approve for special education are profiting from our California taxpayer dollar that is intended for education. Many of the firms are located in San Diego County. I made an important observation about the attorneys at the firms. They are primarily white, not African-American. The attorneys in special ed administration know which reading programs help a student with a reading disability, such as dyslexia, to learn to read. Families with money hire an attorney and sign a private settlement agreement, a hush agreement, or go to due process. This is a trial in front of a judge who is also paid with our tax dollars. Low-income families can't afford an advocate or an attorney to get a reading program for their student with dyslexia. My story is similar to the movie Blind Side, except we were blindsided by Temecula Valley Unified School District. Student came to live with me in eighth grade after his biological parents abandoned him. I received foster care benefits held at Rice for him. He was an African-American student who was on the free lunch program. He was a unduplicated count student, and district received additional money through local control funding formula outcast. When he was 17 years old, Temecula tested him in second grade reading level. I used $10,000 of taxpayer dollar foster care to pay an attorney per student. District spent at least $10,000 for their special ed attorney from Dennis Wolverine Kelly to attend every IEP meeting for 1.5 years. During this time, student attempted suicide. He told me in the emergency room, he wishes he didn't have dyslexia. He had a severe reading disability. After 1.5 years, when student turned 18, during IEP meetings at Temecula Chapel High School, administrator and attorney denied him reading remediation. I followed up with personnel complaints. Temecula Human Resources wouldn't meet with me without their attorney from Adam Silver Mcnally, who has represented districts in federal and Superior Court. I am estimating that our tax dollar wasted was approximately $24,000. $10,000 in foster care, $10,000 to Dennis Wolverine Kelly, and $4,000 to Adam Silver Mcnally. I wanted one African-American student who lived at the Salvation Army in LA before moving to Temexa to break the cycle of poverty to be provided reading and spelling programs to prepare him for college and career. What I discovered was how our taxpayer dollar in education is wasted paying private law firms who profit with students with disabilities. A former superintendent told me that this big business for the law firm can spike the legislation.
You have 15 seconds to conclude.
The expense is then carried over to our county board of supervisor to oversee jail, foster care CPS, and many other government agencies. The cycle of poverty continues for many students. More teachers, less lawyers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll take Mary Ann Grozner, followed by Rita Luth.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi there. Hi.
Hi.
I had emailed you all, but I'm following up. I'm providing you with notification that this May 27, 2020 regular board meeting is not in compliance with the requirements of the California Ralph M. Brown Act. And thus, should be rescheduled to allow the district to come into compliance with the law. As of this afternoon, I could not find a direct link to the current agenda for tonight's meeting on the DMUSD's main webpage. I have screenshots, which I already emailed to the board. I had to click around to several links before I could actually locate the agenda for tonight's meeting. AB 2257 amended government code section 54954.2 requires agencies with websites to post a prominent direct link on their primary webpages. The current agenda for all meetings would differ on or after January 1st, 2019. The direct link must be standalone and cannot only be part of a contextual menu, which would require users to search for the link on the website. Unfortunately, the district has failed to meet the requirements proposed in the agenda on its website. And if the meeting were to go forward, the public would be deprived of their rights under the California Government Code. Please reschedule the meeting and correct the deficiencies to the district's website in order to ensure proper notification to the public. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Holly. Will you follow up on that? Um, we have Rita Luth, followed by Jennifer Hill.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead, Rita.
Thank you, board member, for your comments at the beginning acknowledging the First Amendment rights of the public. I very much appreciate the opportunity to comment on how amid the coronavirus outbreak, one of your vendors, the law firm Fagan, Friedman, and Full Frost, is suing children with disabilities. FFF has filed a myriad of legal actions to deny services of children with disabilities during the coronavirus outbreak. As a matter of fact, on closed session agenda earlier, you may have been discussing a special education matter. In a press release, advocate Steve Figaroa reported that while being sequestered in their homes due to the national pandemic, FFF has filed legal actions against the families of children with disabilities in the Upland Unified School District, Altaluma School District, and Fontana Unified School District. On March 18th, while our state was under stay-home orders, FFF sued our family for $12,000, arguing they are due the money they needlessly spend on hiring private investigators to conduct surveillance of our family's attorney and our private tutor. In March 2018, the Upland Unified School Board voted unanimously to settle the case and give my daughter needed services, but yet FFF continued to pursue litigation without any board approval. Public records show that the firm spent $124,000 in an eight-month period to mitigate, but $0 to actually provide the services to the student, which is what the school board had approved. The law firm hired private investigators to do surveillance on the student's attorney and private tutor. The surveillance the district paid for with our education tax dollars included: surveillance at the home, comprehensive background, establishing whereabouts, locating picture of subject, research of social media, verifying property ownership, and DMV vehicle registration check verification. All this to fight a request for reading instruction and related services. Please ask how it is possible for your district to be engaged in litigations and not approve services for children. Please look into how FFF is using your district tax dollars and spend your money on teachers, not lawyers. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll have Jennifer Hill, followed by Eduardo Dunevich.
Hello, board. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Jennifer.
Thank you. Hello, Superintendent McClurg and Board of Trustees. I'm speaking on behalf of parents from Delmar Hills Academy of Arts and Science. We would like for this superintendent and board of trustees to reconsider dismissal of Summer Wyman. Our small school has had a different art teacher every year for four years. We, the parents, want continuity in our students' art education. We feel that Summer Wyman is a positive addition to our school community. Ms. Wyman has been exceptional in helping our children develop a love of expressing themselves in visual terms. She has taught them about aesthetic concepts, art appreciation, and the ability to make qualitative judgments about art. During this hard time, Ms. Wyman has been available to her students through distant learning as well as responsive to the parents. Most importantly, the students love her. She is patient and kind with everyone. We would like to continue having our children learn from someone that fits so well in our community. The only consistent STEAM teacher that we have had at Delmar Hills is the one who is employed full-time. Due to the part-time nature of the other STEAM specialists at Delmar Hills, the turnover from year to year is extremely high. We would love to have some consistency for our children with great teachers, especially ones who are flexible and willing to split their schedules across multiple schools in the district. Our school has tried in the past to hire a teacher who could teach both art and music without success. In addition, our music teacher this year was a resounding disappointment and left halfway through the year. We are tired of the ups and downs with STEAM teachers year after year, especially when parents are funding a large percentage of their salaries. It makes it difficult to continue to fundraise for DMSEF when parents are not happy with what they are getting for their contributions. Has there been any consideration given to what music education will look like in the absence of a COVID-19 vaccine? Elementary school music is by nature very hands-on with shared instruments. Why fire a dedicated visual art teacher without knowledge of what STEAM Plus will look like next year? Have you already identified and hired a qualified candidate who will instruct both art and music for the upcoming year? If not, we implore you to please renew Summer Wyman's contract for the 2020, 2021 school year. And thank you. This was signed by over a third of our parents in one week's time. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Eduardo Dunevich, followed by Becky Furman.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the board. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, thank you. Starting with a quote from the DMUSD homepage. "This is a district of thinking, inspiration, and impact. Our students experience a high-quality instructional core, defined by strong academics and superb instructional practice. My comments are motivated by the desire to support the district on this endeavor. Sadly, it is far from what we have experienced over the past 10 weeks, as I'm sure you know. The challenges have been extraordinary, both for the district and the children and families the district serves due to the pandemic. Early in the lockdown, we reached out to the school and district leadership about the plans to address students' educational needs and to discuss potential approaches to facilitate live student engagement at this time. We were assured that the district was working hard on getting to the next phase of learning going. However, we have been limited to about two hours of live weekly engagement, with the vast majority of work occurring offline as homework. Stating the obvious, but elementary school children are poor candidates for learning based on homework. Tiring a change in approach, our children will either continue to lose academic ground, but parents will need to fill the gaps as best as they can. Many others who have been anxiously awaiting news, messages from the school about the approach moving forward. And we appreciate the recent survey that was sent out. Being formally here, school day may become shorter, with students attending either a morning or an afternoon session to enable smaller classes and adequate distancing, and that the school may close for 14 days at a time, when there are cases identified, suggested by CDC guidance. Though, here the lost time will not be recruited in the summer. The dual-track approach that is being discussed and greater focus on sanitizing the schools will require more resources. California faces a record-stake budget deficit, and it appears that cuts are forthcoming. But we parents are at the point in which delaying difficult decisions is no longer an option, and we have to do so with very limited information. Some of the challenges are what type of summer education, educational support do we need to choose for our kids? Do we need to consider long-term tutoring to support the school education? Should we apply to a private school? Transparency and collaboration between school and community are urgently needed. We're keen to engage in dialogue and participate in shaping the approaches moving forward. There are thousands of parents in the district who may wish to volunteer time and share knowledge to support the district with the unprecedented challenges that we face. For the fortunate ones who can afford it, the irony of parents having to fund their children's education after recently approving a new school bond is difficult to escape. And for those who cannot shoulder the responsibility of educating the children while also managing jobs and household duties is a bitter pill in a district rich with resources and... in a district rich with resources and talent. Please create avenues to engage the community so we can assist and fulfill the promise of the district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Becky Fergman followed by Jessica Martinez.
Hi, yes, thank you so much for everyone for your time. Um, I'm speaking on the, um, the subject of Summer Wyman, uh, are the Delmar Hills our art teacher? Um, everything Jennifer had said was so eloquently said. Um, I can only speak, um, or plea that this could be re- reconsidered, um, for my son, who was so hesitant to do art and was very, not very comfortable or confident in his skills. And through summer's, um, lessons, just brought out a new person. And they have a, uh, uh, they can do like an elective class and he got put into art and he was very, you know, upset at the first semester. But by the end, when they got to choose him, her, or their elective for the second semester, he chose art. Her passion, her drive, her ability to inspire children should be rewarded and not, she shouldn't, I would hope that she would not be dismissed by that. And we need more teachers like her and I would hopefully, someone can get out there and really reconsider and see what we can do to keep her because she is an asset to the school district. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And we have Jessica Martinez followed by Sandeep Patel.
Good evening, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm the parent of two children with autism. Um, I would like to address the superintendent and the board regarding my personal experience with the law firm most commonly known as FFF. Um, in September two thousand nineteen, within a forty-eight hour period, FFF sued both my children. Um, it forced me to hire attorneys to defend my children's rights. And I spent over two weeks in January and then again two weeks in February in a special education due process hearing. One of my children, um, wasn't attending the public schools as our family was paying for private education. Yet FFF sued my child in the event that he should ever consider coming back to the district. Um, on April fourteenth this year, while in the shutdown due to the coronavirus outbreak, FFF filed a third new legal action to deny my son assessments. Um, I believe that these actions are designed to discourage myself and other families from advocating for special education services. And in the process, FFF is hijacking education dollars to profit from denying children with disability services that they will need in order to be productive members of society. Uh, the due process, the due process cases against my children were never approved by the school board. And it appears that FFF has figured out a loophole to the education system. Um, where they essentially get a blank check for their billing. And so I would encourage this district and board and superintendent to look into the law firm FF, the three Fs, um, how they're using, um, the taxpayers' dollars to deny kids with disability services. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Our last figure on this item is Sandeep Patel.
Dear board, I want to thank everyone for their hard work. We are truly in extraordinary times. And, uh, I think all of us can see how hard everyone here is working. Um, I actually saw Holly go into the school over the long weekend, uh, to make sure it was open. And, uh, you know, that, that level of care for the kids is really rare. And so I wanted to, um, just congratulate the leadership. I also wanted to offer in terms of, uh, the COVID nineteen, um, kind of issue, which I know is, um, obviously on everyone's mind. And, um, the governor has released guidance, some of which frankly is copy paste from what hospitals do. Um, and I think it's going to be somewhat, um, difficult to implement. But what I wanted to, to kind of reach out, um, with the group about potentially is, um, UCSD you may have seen over the weekend is actually going to reopen, um, as a residential college this fall. Uh, there's an aggressive plan of testing all the students. Um, and so I, yeah, I know it's a, these are older children, but if there are any opportunities to, to reach out, um, piggyback, it, it'll be one of the earlier, um, ways in which a residential school frankly opened in the US and it's in our backyard. And so just wanted to bring that up as a potential opportunity, though some of the things you can do with college kids, you of course can't do with, uh, elementary school kids by any means, but that may be a unique opportunity. It's our backyard. And then secondly, I think, and you guys know this better than me, uh, they'll, they'll learn a lot from the European experience and what's going on in Asia as well. But just wanted to throw out the idea, um, if it's reasonable for the board, um, you know, reaching out to our neighbors at, at UCSD and trying to figure out how they're going to pull off having not only college, residential college. And if there are anything we can apply into, you know, what we may want to do in terms of reopening to keep our kids safe. Because I get going some of the earlier comments, uh, for many children, uh, just as at our own workplace, we may have difficulty paying attention during soon meetings. Our poor kids are trying to do that for hours and then it's extremely difficult for them. Or at least maybe it's just, uh, i- in our household. And so just want to throw out that at the end. Thank you for the board and, uh, thank you Holly for your view.
Thank you. That concludes item four point two. So we are at item five point one through five point eight. The governing board and district administration would like to honor staff and community members who deserve to be recognized for their exemplary contributions in the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Assistant Superintendent Instructional Servi- Instructional Services Shelley Peterson and Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources Jason Romero will announce this year's honorees. This is usually what we call the cake meeting, which we all know is Doug Raffner's favorite meeting of the year. Um, so we will have to save the cake for a future meeting. Um, but we still want to recognize our, um, our wonderful employees and community members.
Thank you, uh, Board President Halpern, uh, governing board members, uh, and Superintendent Dr. McClurg. Uh, it is definitely my pleasure, uh, this, uh, evening, uh, to recognize, uh, a huge, uh, percentage of our district uh, employees that just go above and beyond, uh, every year. So we are fortunate to work with some of the most amazing educators, uh, in the state and really in the nation. And it's by no accident, uh, that this district is so successful. It's through the, uh, training and through the hard work, through the countless hours, uh, that our teachers put towards their craft. Uh, and the eight teachers we're recognizing tonight are just an example of many, many teachers in our great district that are doing amazing things. Um, it is with great pleasure that I'm sharing our site teachers of the year this evening. The governing board of trustees and district administration are pleased to applaud and honor the following DMUSD two thousand twenty site teachers of the year. From Ashley Falls, Katie Kirby, special education teacher. From Carmel Del Mar, Ashley Whipple, first grade teacher. From Del Mar Heights, Paige Rollins, second grade teacher. From Del Mar Hills Academy, uh, Ara Alard, fourth grade teacher. From Ocean Air School, Kelly Hilirud, speech and language pathologist. From Sage Canyon School, Trent Tracy, STEAM plus physical education teacher. From Sycamore Ridge, Eric Fankie, STEAM plus technology teacher. And from Torrey Hills, Rebecca Hoyt, kindergarten teacher. Congratulations, DMUSD two thousand twenty site teachers of the year. The next item is item five point two, which is the recognition of our DMUSD two thousand twenty district teacher of the year. It is with great pleasure that the governing board of trustees and district administration applaud and honor Ara Alard as our two thousand twenty district teacher of the year. She will represent us in the two thousand twenty-one district teacher of the year, uh, candidate, uh, for, uh, county teacher of the year. So congratulations to Ara Alard. Ara has been a part of the Delmar Hills Academy, uh, for, uh, for quite some time now. Uh, she is just an exemplary educator. She's involved in every committee you can imagine at the district level. Uh, she's seen as, as not just a, a caring teacher by her parents and students, but someone who really is at the forefront of, you know, what's happening with our, our district and what's happening with, uh, education. She's a constant learner. She goes above and beyond. It is just a great example of, of an amazing educator and we're lucky to have her in our district. Congratulations Ara. Thank you. Uh, moving on to our next item, five point three. Our board recognition of our two thousand twenty classified employees of the year. The governing board and trustees and district administration are pleased and, uh, to applaud and honor the following two thousand twenty school site and district office classified employees of the year. Our classified employees are employees that, you know, with, are the backbone of any district. So our employees, our classified employees are either working hand in hand with our students or working in the district operations to make sure that our teachers and our school sites are operating at the highest level. I'm proud to, uh, start off with Ashley Falls School, Apurajita Banyo Pade, our behavior support interventionist. From Carmel Del Mar School, Katie Gomez, office assistant. From Del Mar Heights School, Teresa Ruder, occupational therapist. From Del Mar Hills Academy, Kevin Wildberger, special education instructional aide. From Ocean Air School, Yvonne Ronz, office assistant. From Sage Canyon School, Megan Lombardo, office assistant. From Sycamore Ridge School, Nira Zuka, uh, Buckala, Buckala. Special education instructional aide. From Torrey Hills School, Nora Rodriguez. From our after-school programs, Ryselda Ariano, site team lead. From the district office, Margaret Mendenhall, payroll benefits supervisor. And from our early childhood development center, Nicole Sanders, preschool teacher. Congratulations, two thousand twenty classified employees of the year. Item five point four, our DMUSD district classified employee of the year. The governing board of trustees and district administration are pleased to applaud and our, and honor Margaret Mendenhall, district office payroll benefit supervisor as our two thousand twenty district classified employee of the year. Congratulations, Margaret. You know, all of our district, uh, is in some way affected by Margaret Mendenhall. As someone who is responsible for, uh, you know, making sure our payroll is, is, uh, uh, you know, consistent, she does an amazing job, you know, through, not just through COVID nineteen, but Margaret is one who works weekends through holidays, uh, to make sure that, you know, our staff is compensated and payroll is accurate and, you know, in people's, uh, accounts when needed. She is just the, you know, an amazing, amazing payroll supervisor. Thank you, Margaret, for, you know, making sure that our, our teachers and classified employees are, are compensated. And as someone in our, our great district says, uh, employees, uh, they love working for Delmar, but they don't work for free. So, uh, Margaret ensures that, that all of our staff is compensated. Uh, thank you, Margaret, for the work that you do day in and day out. Thank you.
Alright, moving on to item five point five. Um, it is, we have the opportunity to recognize DMUSD two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty PTA presidents. And I have often said that our PTA presidents are our principal's right-hand person. And, um, they are there for us in wonderful, during wonderful times. And they have been there for us during very challenging times like now. Um, they are often the conduits of information to, um, a large group of parents and community. And we couldn't be more grateful for their service and support. We appreciate the ex- the incredible effort of every site PTA president. Um, these are volunteers who are strong school leaders and wonderful, amazing advocates for site membership and school programs. It's a pleasure to recognize the following individuals. At Ashley Falls School, Anya Springer. Carmel Del Mar School, Tamara Wells. Del Mar Heights School, Jen Hasselman. Del Mar Hills Academy, Jennifer Hill. Ocean Air School, Lisa Cragian. Sage Canyon School, Kathy Patrick. Sycamore Ridge School, Gregory Reed. And Torrey Hills School, Brigitte Lasala. Thank you so much to all of our two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, twenty PTA presidents. Thank you for being by our side and helping with the variety of tasks and responsibilities you take on to support our schools and our children. We appreciate you. Five point six, board recognition of DMUSD two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, uh, D-LAC members. The governing board of trustees and district administration greatly appreciate the time and input from the district English Language Advisory Committee. These members serve as conduits and, uh, are advisory to our district regarding all matters pertaining to English learners. Thank you for your leadership and your support of our students and families. From the following schools, thank you to Ashley Falls School, Trisha Hubbard. And also at Ashley Falls School, Ilsa Teboom. At Carmel Del Mar School, Concepcion Villar Blanco. At Del Mar Hills Academy, Heather Shadley Tovar. At Ocean Air School, Victoria Rowey. Sage Canyon School, Ina Lehrer. Sycamore Ridge School, Yi Tang. And at Torrey Hills School, Sophia Seitz. Thank you so much for your support of our district and for your service to our children and families.
Our next item, DMUSD two thousand nineteen, twenty, uh, DMSEF board, uh, repre- of board representatives. The governing board of trustees and the district greatly appreciates the efforts of each school site's Delmar Schools Education Foundation officers and directors. It is a pleasure to recognize the following DMSEF board member, officers, and site directors for their leadership in the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year and thank them for their dedicated service to the, to the DMUSD schools. Our, our directors and officers of the foundation are critical to, uh, our, our STEAM plus program. You know, with our program needing, uh, the funding of our foundation, uh, to be as amazing as it is, is, you know, thousands of hours that these individuals contribute to, uh, making sure that, you know, fundraising and, and celebrating our, our successes, um, happen. So, uh, thank you so much to the foundation. It's, it's a pleasure to work alongside you. And, uh, it's a pleasure to recognize our, our, uh, representatives. So the officers are Phoebe Castle, president and chairman. She's from Ashley Falls School. Laura Young, the treasurer from Ocean Air School. James Jackanet from, uh, the secretary from Torrey Hills School. Sonya Williams, VP of Administration from Del Mar Hills Academy. Our executive administrator, Kate Ditzel. From Ashley Falls School, Ryan Gordon. From Carmel Del Mar School, David Evans and Veronica Fort. From Del Mar Heights School, Jennifer Magenti and William Redd. From Del Mar Hills Academy, Becky Fergman and Jenny Galan. From Ocean Air School, Anique Whittle and Megan Bijon. From Sage Canyon School, Viva Aliya and Wendy Hager. And from Torrey Hills School, Adiseli Forrester, Rupa Singh, and Miley Yi. Thank you for all the work that you do in making our program amazing. So last but not least, um, the group that we're going to honor and recognize, uh, tonight, uh, finally is our two thousand nineteen, twenty retirees. Uh, this group of thirteen employees, uh, combined almost, uh, equals four hundred years of collective service and education. Uh, our, our district is, is amazing because of all the hard work that, uh, all of our employees and families and, and children bring to, uh, our district. And these employees are, are going to be missed and valued and, and their dedication over the last collective four hundred years uh, have made, uh, education at Delmar amazing. Uh the first employee that we'd like to recognize is Shirley Bales, Program Assistant, Instructional Services. Next Caroline Draper, Third Grade Teacher, Carmel Del Mar. Travis Gordon, Maintenance Worker Three, Maintenance Operations and Facilities. Greg Jordan, Plant Manager, Sage Canyon School. Doctor Peg LaRose, Principal, Sycamore Ridge School. Jennifer Luce, STEAM Plus Art Teacher, Ocean Air School. Gail Moran, STEAM Plus Technology Teacher, Del Mar Heights School. Cynthia Nicole, Sixth Grade Teacher, Sage Canyon School. Holly Palmer, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent. Trudy Smith, Health Aid Technician, Ocean Air School. Janice Swanson, STEAM Plus Technology Teacher, Torrey Hill School. Linda Tucker, Office Assistant, Del Mar Heights School. And Vicki Worley, Office Assistant, Ashley Falls School. Congratulations, DMUSD Retirees. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Um some things just are not the same on Zoom. And this is one of them. We um are so appreciative to everybody who has worked so hard this year, especially this year. With everything going on this spring um and working remotely for everything that you've done and. Um and also it's really sad to say goodbye to our retirees. That is a. It's a big list and we're sad to see you go. So we wish we could celebrate with you in person, um but we will. Um have to find another time when things are back up and running to properly recognize you for um all of your years of service. So thank you. We are gonna turn to item five point nine, the DMCTA Report with David Skinner. So like, there he goes. David, you're in the call, but you're muted. There you go.
Sorry about that. You'd think after all the Zooming, I'd get a handle on this. Thanks for having me on. I have to say I'm trying to catch my breath from all the retirees that um. Definitely makes you pause and I I do always appreciate this meeting, the cake meeting. I actually forgotten that that's what this was called. And um I do hope we get a chance to celebrate those people. Um on behalf of DMCTA, um we're very proud of our eight um site teachers of the year and Aura especially. We're also very proud of our five teacher retirees and and what a great loss it is for us to um to lose all of that expertise. Earlier this afternoon, we had a a DMCTA General Meeting. Um generally, we do this every year and it's. Sometimes it's more of a formality and typically at this time of year, people are ready to go. That what this was actually one of the most attended meetings we have ever had. Even though it was on Zoom and it was at the end of the day and this is getting towards the summer. And as we got to the end where um there was a time for some questions and answers. Um it was really clear that that these people, the teachers in our district are not done. Um they have a a lot of things to say and to to share and they really. The the primary thing that I walked away with was just how much they are anxious to share with you and with the district. Their successes and challenges that they've had over the last several months, especially regarding remote learning. Um they want to be a part of any future discussions as far as setting it up for next year. We know how much. Uh the parents want want to know more about that and we certainly do too. We all want what's best for our students. And clearly, there are a lot of unknowns with that, but I but I really hope that the district will take advantage of of so many of them willing to um. To participate and to give input. Right now, the district is running a um a committee and we do have some teachers on that. We hope that we will be able to get many more and a lot more opportunity for input. Um thanks for all everything this evening. Thanks for all your leadership over the last several months. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Um five point one, five ten is the DMSCF Report with Phoebe Castle. There you go.
Hi there.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. Um good evening, Dr. McClurgan, President Halpern and members of the Board and members of the Cabinet. It's good to see all of you. Um thank you for honoring our incredible community tonight and and all of our volunteers too. The amazing um PTA Presidents and um and our DMSCF Board too. I'm sad that we're not getting to enjoy cake with everyone, but yeah, hopefully we'll be able to do that in person. Um I'll just do um a quick update so that everyone knows where where um DMSCF is. Obviously, this has been a difficult time for our entire community. Um and as we shared at the last Board of Trustees meeting. Uh we were unable to go forward with the last five of our eight school jog-a-thons. Um but we have had still incredible community support. We've been um. You know, very, we feel very fortunate and we just feel very grateful to um our community who continues to step up. Continues to try to support um STEAM Plus Learning, which we all know is so vital for our kids. Um we've had community support from um our community partners to our bus- our community business partners from. Richard Stone, who's doing a generous match this month to try to encourage more giving. Um One Paseo has reached out to donate gift cards to um. All of our free and reduced lunch families in the district, which we're so grateful for. Um we still have um you know, gift cards and things to give out to our families from our other community partners when we do get to be back. Um at school. So we thank everybody for all of their support. And we just want to share that, you know, our value of supporting um public schools. Um we think is more more vital than ever at a time like this. Um we, you know, DMSCF believes strongly in supporting our children's intellect and self-expression, social skills. And engagement with the larger world. And so we hope that that can continue in in the best um the best way possible, which we know. Um the district is working hard on for next year. Um so we ask that if for people in the community who can, we hope you can join us in the next. Um two to three weeks before the end of the school year, um and giving to STEAM Plus Learning. And um we look forward to hopefully, you know, a great year next year if it's um partly remote or partly in person, but. We're looking forward to that and um you know, we we thank everybody in the district for working so hard on this. Um because we know it hasn't been easy for anyone. So thank you.
Thank you, Phoebe. Um we all move to Board Reports, item five eleven. And um we did not have any joint activities this month other than public meetings. So we will do our Board Reports in reverse alphabetical order to give Catherine a break and we'll start with Scott Woodin.
Hi, thanks, everybody. Um I don't have much to say because like I said, like. Um Erica said, we haven't had any uh anything outside of these public board meetings. It's a shame that we haven't been able to go into the schools. Uh for the last site visits and for the graduation that's coming up, this for the sixth graders um in a in a couple of weeks. Uh so but I do look forward to uh getting off uh to a great school year in the fall, getting the students back in classrooms. Uh it is important that all the students are getting uh. Uh education in the classroom because the disadvantage of the in the specialized students in particular are the ones that are um. Uh disadvantaged by doing this online uh on remote learning. So I look forward to trying to get something more closely uh related to normal uh in the fall. I would also hope that we can get to uh a regular meeting in person uh in Ja- June, but we'll see how it how that goes. But that's all I have to say for today.
Thanks. Um okay, Doug Raffner.
I was gonna talk on the subject that you spoke on, uh and that is civility. Um and I appreciate your your words at the beginning of the meeting and I want to remind everybody of. The concept that Jim Peabody gave to us as Board Members when we first came onto the Board and that is that. If we keep the kids at the forefront of any decision that we make and make our decisions for what's best for those kids. We'll never be steered wrong. And and I think throughout everything that we've gone through, uh we've done and and done better for it. Uh so even with a little bit of polarization and uh. Dissension among the ranks, I think we've come through what we've come through in in a better place and I think the the plans that we've laid out. Are better for it. So uh I I appreciate your words, Erica, and congratulations to. All of those that are uh retiring. Uh I will miss uh them and and. I I don't know all of them, but I do know some of them and and certainly their shoes will be hard to fill.
Hey, Chiba.
Well, I really don't have anything to add. I just um, if you guys got it all, uh. Yeah, just I I'd love to be able to do this in person to say thanks to everybody that was uh uh honored today and and I. Look forward to that cake meeting at some point, but yeah, thanks, everybody. Um let's uh have do this some other time in person. Thanks.
Thanks, and Catherine Fitzpatrick.
Well, I don't think I get many opportunities to congratulate my former elementary school teachers on their retirement. So I just wanted to say congratulations to Mrs. Marie Anne and I hope you enjoy. All the wonderful years to come, this next exciting chapter of your life and to Holly Palmer as well and to everyone who's been honored this evening. Thank you for all you've done for students and for families and for all the tireless work that you um. Give to to the district of to education. So thank you so much.
Thanks, Catherine. Okay, we are at item five point one two, Superintendent's Report.
Good evening again. I too wish to thank all of the honorees this evening and congratulate them. I um do know almost all of them personally and it is with very mixed emotions that I see their pictures or their names. Because i- in one, on one hand, a a great amount of gratitude for everything that they do. And that they give to our children and for those that are retiring, it's with a heavy heart. Because knowing them personally, um you develop a relationship with each one and they've made such a difference and um they will be very, very missed. And yes, we do plan to have cake at another time and get them all back. Hopefully, they won't go too far and they'll come back and we can celebrate in person. So we've had a lot going on in the district the last month since we actually had a regular board meeting. Uh the great news is some of our facilities are reopening. So as you know. We are under the guidelines from Human Health and Services Agency. And we have recently reopened our fields for recre- recreation for the health order guidelines. So as usual. Those are open so that people can access our fields and be able to follow those guidelines that are posted there. So that we all remain safe and healthy. This week, our Early Childhood Development Center reopened for. Um parents who are essential workers as well as those going back to work. So we were excited to be able to. Open our Early Childhood Development Center, of course, following all of the requirements there and the staff has done a beautiful job. Huge congratulations and thank you to those staff members who've done such a beautiful job of reopening. And regarding planning for the new school year, we are planning, we're currently in a multi- multi-step process of planning. It's been mentioned several times. Right now, I I'll say it very loudly and clearly that we are striving to go back full time with regular schedules at the earliest opportunity. So our first day of school is Monday, August twenty fourth. If we can open school and go back with a regular schedule, that's what we're planning to do and obviously. You will be hearing a lot more about what that looks like to keep our children and staff members healthy, as well as have opportunities to participate. In some thought exchange, interactive ways for our staff, our teachers, as well as our parents. So we'll be communicating about that in the next week or so. We've also already sent out a survey to our parents. To ask them at this time, knowing what they know, um what would they be thinking regarding a traditional in-school, in-person experience? Or a distance learning experience? We had over two thousand respondents to that survey responses. And of those responses, about sixty percent came back saying at this time, they would want an in-person. You know, what we what we view as a traditional school experience and about forty percent were saying that they would probably that they would consider. Opting for a distance learning experience. So one of the things that we do know is that it's very, this is really uncertain. Because we don't have the guidelines yet regarding school from from the Human Health and Services Agency. When we get those, we will be able to better plan and involve at an even different level. Our staff members and our parents in helping make decisions moving forward. So we're we're anticipating that. And excited about being able to do that as we move forward. Knowing that there's a lot unknown. We do want to get input from our parents so that we can get an idea of what they're thinking. It helps us plan and staff accordingly. We also know that, you know, a lot can happen and will happen between now and August twenty fourth. So what parents tell us now could perhaps change in August. So we will be surveying parents again. Um before school starts so that they have an op- o- opportunity to confirm what they're thinking is best for their child for the upcoming school year. So there are many things that we don't know. There are some things that we absolutely do know. When we talk about a traditional in-school experience, that does include interaction with children and teachers and and peers, classmates. It's not solitary. They come to school to be at school. So we want to make that as safe of of a situation as possible. I compliment all of the people that are working very hard behind the scenes. We've said it before, but if you've heard about it on the news or heard about it in another district or wondered if we're thinking about it. I guarantee you, we've heard about it, we're thinking about it, and we're definitely taking all of those things into consideration. So stay tuned. There will be lots of opportunities for our teachers, our staff members and parents to be involved, either through um surveys or. Uh our thought exchanges, various meetings and committees. So thank you so much for all that you've been doing so far. Huge compliments to our district staff and um parents for taking on a very challenging time. And doing a very, very nice job with with less than ideal circumstances. Thank you so much. And thank you to the Board for supporting. All of that hard work and your your words of encouragement are always very much appreciated and we appreciate your leadership as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Holly. Okay, item five point one three is the Public Hearing. Board Information and Approval, Close the Public Hearing for the Submission of the Initial Proposals. For the Amending Articles to the two thousand nineteen twenty-two. DMUSD and DMCTA Labor Agreement related to the Classified Occupational Therapist being represented by the Del Mar California Teachers Association. So um this is the time to call for public comment, but there is no, there are no requests. So um are there any questions about this before I call for a motion? Okay, is there a motion to approve closing the public hearing?
I'll move to approve uh closing the meeting.
Uh thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Catherine. Okay, roll call vote. Member Wooden.
Aye.
Member Raffner. I didn't hear it. So Doug, do you wanna do that again?
Aye.
Okay, um Member Mock.
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
An aye for me. Okay, so the motion to approve the pub- uh to close the public. Motion to to close the public hearing is passed and the hearing is closed at six fifty eight PM. Okay, item five point one four is the Public Hearing to Review the Proposed two thousand twenty twenty-one Budget and Balances. In Excess of Minimum Reserve Requirements. I'm opening the hearing at six fifty-nine PM and calling for public comment. Do not have any public comment requested on this item. So are there any questions from the Board before we go to motions? Okay, is there a move to uh approve closing the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay, Doug, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote. Member Wooden.
Aye.
Member Raffner.
Aye.
Member Mock.
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
An aye for me and the hearing is closed at still six fifty-nine PM. Five point one five is Public Input Concerning Items on the Agenda. This is a call for public input speaker request regarding items on the agenda. Only items uh on the agenda can be addressed. Um at this time. So I have a couple of requests for upcoming items, but we we will do those at the time of item. Five point one six is Board Approval of the Governing Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes. Are there any corrections or comments on the minutes? Okay, is there a move to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, although, let's see, uh. Roll call vote, Number Wooden.
Aye.
Member Raffner.
Aye.
Member Mock.
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Okay, and aye for me. The motion to approve the minutes has passed. We are item six point one through six point eight, which is the consent agenda. We do have a comment on the consent agenda. Uh item six point two, so I'm gonna call Mary Ann Groszner to comment on that item.
Hello. Hi.
Hi.
Hi there. Uh dear board members, thank you for allowing me to speak. Um I was talking to you about the consent agenda six point two. Um and it does not show enough details about what specifically um these purchase orders are for, but I'm assuming some of them are for special education. Um so I wanted to ask you to please look into how Fagan, Friedman and Full Frost are using tax dollars. Uh this law firm has targeted immensely on children with disabilities. FFF sued a family for twelve thousand dollars, arguing they are due the money they spent hiring private investigators to perform surveillance of a family's attorney and their private tutor. And I'll say it again because it's almost unbelievable. FFF hired private investigators to spy on a family's attorney and the private, family's private tutor. Who does that? Um FFF has engaged in dubious practices and has protracted litigation in many cases. In San Bernardino, FFF has actually pursued litigation without any board approval, despite the fact Upland Unified School Board voted unanimously to settle the case and provide the a disabled child with needed services. Most recently, SSS FFF has filed a myriad of legal actions to deny services to children with disabilities during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Some of FFF founders were previously with Lasana Smith, who also is listed on your purchase orders. In two thousand and five, a federal judge sanctioned the firm for unethical practices related to the denial of services to a child with autism. According to news reports, the firm spent hundreds of thousands of public dollars to deny a student's request for tutoring, and the attorney representing the student would have settled the case for approximately twenty thousand dollars. Instead of providing services to a disabled student, which was approved by the school board, FFF spent a hundred twenty-four thousand dollars litigating against the family over several months, according to public records. When the contract renewal comes up for law firms such as Fagan, Friedman and Full Frost and Lasana Smith in June, I would like to ask the board to consider an in-house counsel instead. Board members, you are the stewards of the public trust, and the public rightfully expects trustees to vet this information sufficiently and scrutinize spending with careful analysis and due diligence before presenting it for approval. As a taxpayer, I'm requesting that you look into how Fagan, Friedman and Full Frost are using our taxpayer dollars and change the focus towards funding teachers and classified staff and not lawyers. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any board members who have questions on items on the consent agenda or anything to pull off the consent agenda?
I just have a quick, real quick question. I just uh I was looking through the um, which am I calling this here? Uh the purchase orders. I just, I think as, just a quick question for for Chris. It it like, one of the things is for Division of State Architect, and it's like plan check fees. I was just kinda curious as to how those get calculated and what that's for, if you don't mind. Can I explain that really quickly?
It's the plan check fees when you go in for GSA plan check are based on a percentage of the total uh uh anticipated construction cost. And so uh I don't have the exact percentage in front of me, but if you look at the plan check fees for the different projects, the Delmar Heights School Rebuild has a obviously a much higher fee as we um look towards uh some of the smaller projects that we would do, you'd have a much lower fee based on the construction cost.
Got it. Thanks.
Okay, other questions?
I'll just make uh one comment because I know we had the speaker that was asking about kind of uh legal fees and uh a possible in-house counselors. Uh we are a small school district, and I know this is something that the the board has discussed uh uh in the past about uh in-house councils. Thing is, with these uh with with the lawyer or the legal fees you see, they're in uh different categories. Uh so uh whether it be special ed or uh personnel or whatever it is, and we use the specialists in whatever field. So it's kind of hard for a small district like us to be able to have in-house uh jack-of-all-trades. I guess you probably don't want a jack-of-all-trades uh legal counsel. Uh whereas somebody in, say, San Diego Unified or L.A. Unified, which has thousands and thousands of dollars of legal fees, they can afford specific attorneys for specific uh cases. So uh that it's just something that uh just reeling to the public uh what you see on here and uh and the, like I said, these legal fees are a mixture of a lot of different pieces, and we use different legal firms with different specialties depending on what we're needing. So that's, that was just my comment.
Thanks, Guy. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items six point one through six point eight?
I'm moved to approve the congen- uh consent items.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have Catherine first, so we'll go with that. Um let's see, uh we will do roll call vote. Member Wooden.
Aye.
Member Raffner.
Aye.
Member Mock.
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
An aye for me. The motion to approve the consent agenda has passed. Item eight point one is board report district superintendent goals, progress and accomplishments with Dr. Nocor. Good evening again. As per our regular routine, I'm going to give a synopsis of what's happened the last um since February, actually. This normally would look different because we typically have kind of a summative expression of the year that includes input that we've received from um various planning meetings, strategic planning meetings, et cetera. Some of that will happen now over the course of the summer and into next year, obviously, because we are um occupied with the pandemic. So as we look though at the goals and what's occurred this year, I will, I'll give you a little bit of an inside look into this past uh couple of months and how it's been impacted as a whole. So next slide. So as you know, um there are major areas under district leadership, meaning this governance team that includes the um the superintendent. And when we talk about educational leadership, we have those three levers, and these three levers are outlined in our strategic plan. We've talked a lot about that next slide. Um but this time I do need to talk to you about the fact that those three levers have been somewhat um really consumed and overshadowed by, not that it hasn't occurred that those things haven't been attended to, they have, but the school closure that obviously came from an order of the um help, Human Health and Cert- excuse me, Health and Human Services Agency really changed everything. And we talked about this before, what were our responsibilities and our objectives during school closure, and you can see here um our primary responsibilities and what we've been paying attention to. So although, next slide please. We still have done incredible things. What we normally would have identified as part of the educational programming and what we'd be looking at as far as leadership in that arena really was, has been based on taking a, the word pivot actually isn't strong enough because it is such an extreme move to completely change how you're doing your educational programming to an online um virtual reality that is very different and not, and our district is not grounded in um a distance learning type of type of program. So you can see here our two primary objectives throughout the past um couple of months since March thirteenth have been really focused on helping kids become, be engaged with lessons and provide opportunities for them to connect with their teachers and their classmates. So we realize, and again, this is an emergency. It is not a program that we've developed over months and months and really a strategic outreach and all of those things that we typically do when we're designing programs. Um but I think our staff has really um done so much to to try to keep those kids connected and do as much as we can, knowing that it really definitely is a um, it's felt at home by parents trying to fill in those gaps that we actually know they're experiencing by not being in school. So that said, how we typically do, next slide please, how we typically do things is very thought out, well-planned, intentional, and this is an example of something that has been months and years actually in the making. Our, the the development of our Spanish immersion program. And I'm pleased to say that our instructional services department has done an incredible job along with teachers throughout our district who've been part of the the uh the work to make a plan come to come to reality and the vision of this board to actually have finally a Spanish immersion program. It is going to start in kindergarten. We had so much interest that we are going to start a kindergarten class and have a strand at Delmar Hills Academy and a kindergarten class and start a strand at Ashley Falls School. So the applications have been completed, the lottery process has been completed, and all of those classes are full with people, with students on the waiting list. We are still actually accepting, I do know if new students came in or they're as interested in actually applying for the program. I know that students can still be added to the lot, to the um waitlist. So um you you there's still, I I encourage people to consider this fantastic program. Um there's nothing like being biliterate by the time you leave sixth grade, which will be wonderful. We're so excited about that program. So that's an example of just top quality. I will mention, getting back to the distance learning, we do know that our parents are going, some of our parents are are likely going to want that option for the fall. So that is something now that we are looking at and really in the stage of developing um as a leadership team and and along with our teacher leaders and our teachers throughout the district, um will be um, will really be working on the specifics of that. So we have a a well-developed program for those parents who opt that for their children in the fall. So we're excited about that, and we'll share more with that in the incoming meetings. So next um slide please. So another area, staff and personnel. So next slide, it probably doesn't surprise you that throughout since February, a lot of what we've needed to pay attention to is supporting one another in something that a very different world than we were experiencing or that we would have predicted um before um when I, when I was last speaking about this in February. So really knowing that people needed, all of us needed support and to support one another with what does it look like if we have things virtually from um actual devices to support in how to use platforms, which platforms, how do we make sure we have the curriculum that supports it, how we support our parents? How are we available? What are the expectations? What are the guidelines? How do that, how does it then become differentiated for teachers and for staff members so that each staff member gets what they want? So and what they need at any given time. So that became even much more differentiated throughout the process as people became um much more proficient and efficient with certain parts of it. They could then opt in for certain um, for certain webinars that were designed to um actually reach a lot of different people. So they could opt in for the ones that met their needs, and that's been a primary focus throughout um throughout the last several months. Next slide, business, finance and facilities. This is an example of the rest of the district continues as I've already shared some of those things with you. So this has been very busy. Next slide. Business and finance is all, we're always operating under, and you'll hear more about the budget first read for the next school year in just a little bit, but um our our finance department does a beautiful job of being very connected with what's important and valued in our district, and therefore our budget's aligned with what our LCAP and District Design twenty-two states. We have a a uh, we maintain our level of financial reserves. That's been a priority of this board. It's smart, it's sound, it's set to be successful now and and into the future. And also, it's been a big priority this year to ensure that proceeds from the general obligation bond are properly properly accounted for. They've done a beautiful job of that. There's a lot of transparency. There's a whole other, a whole section on our website dedicated to that, easy to find. And then we've established our first citizens oversight committee because, as you know, Measure MM is the very first general obligation bond that this district has ever had. So a lot of these are firsts for our district. So great job to the business and finance department the last couple of months and and few months actually getting all of that together. And the next part of that department um has been all about facilities, and we've had a very busy few months and entire year with facilities. And since I last spoke with you, we actually completed the land purchase of Pacific Highlands Ranch. That land for school number nine now is owned by the Delmar Union School District. Are excited about that. We also finished um the process of the Delmar Heights rebuild project, the planning process, and are into the next stages of that. The same with Torrey Hills Build Project. You'll hear more about that in just a little bit tonight. We've actually begun, um when we're talking about learning environments and what it looks like district-wide. Obviously, um it's it's not only a brand new school, but we look at what that first phase of modernization would look like at all of our schools, and that our very next two schools that are due for a full modernization or a completion of modernization will be um Delmar Hills Academy and Carmel Del Mar. So a lot of that work with modernization has been happening, as well as preparation, preparing our schools um we in in this context of COVID-nineteen. So um what kinds of things need to be done to actual school facilities? How do we keep them as clean and sanitized and safe as possible? And then obviously, planning for enrollment and where students are in the next school year because we have a lot going on, and we have some potential different programs and um and where are the students going to be located and how, you know, what's the impact of each school site with all of the things we've got going on. So a lot of things are in the works. Next slide, community and external relations has been a top priority, as you can imagine, and we've all experienced it in the throes of a pandemic. Next slide please. Communication with staff, families and community has been always a top priority, and now is even more so. It is somewhat challenging to nev- actually more than somewhat, it's very challenging to never be able to, to not be able to be in the same room with people. I think one of the things that makes our district really special and unique is we are a really good size. And and we're big enough to make great things happen, and yet we're small enough to feel connected as a community and to really know one another, and to be told that we can't come together is actually hard. So all of these various ways we've been really trying to reach out and keep people connected and get input about all of these important things going on, knowing that it's actually a progression of when we have information, we actually can share it out and then involve people in the next stage of the decision-making process. So for example, because we don't have the guidelines from Human Health and Services Agency yet, specific to schools, there's a limited amount of what we know about what will happen in August. But as we get that information, we will be sure to communicate it with everybody and involve folks along the way, be it, whether it's a a staff member or parents throughout our school. So we'll continue to use surveys as we do. Flash surveys work great because they're quick to take and we get great response. We also just and um just acquired Thought Exchange, which is an interactive way for us to in real time um en- engage with our community around ideas, and people can actually engage with one another in our community about that. So that will be a great venue and a great uh resource for us to use for our community to come together um a- a- as well. I do want to thank um the the leadership throughout our district as far as obviously at the school sites and our teachers and and um board, et cetera, but also our PTA presidents and DMSCF. They've really done a great job to continue to build that sense of community and help us get the word out about certain things. And last but not least, um and actually most important, is student safety and well-being. Um again, not being with children in our schools has been challenging for us because we don't actually get to be with them in person, and um we, that said, we are very, very in tune with their well-being, and that's why this phase of distance learning has included much more interaction. So our teachers and our staff members can actually see children, albeit albeit on a screen, but have that interaction and check in with them, and it's for the purposes of, and next, next slide please, Chris. For the purposes of, you know, obviously that connection and interaction, but we know that the academic support is important and also the emotional support. Kids need school. There's a reason that schools exist. Obviously, I'm an advocate for public education. Um our schools provide an incredible place for kids to learn and um and a wonderful, it's it's just a wonderful asset for our community. And there's been an absence throughout these last um couple of months, and we're going to be very excited to bring everybody back together. We know how important our community is to us, and we value that relationship and being part of our neighborhood. So thank you for all of that. And as we move on to the next one, just two more slides. This one is about planning for the end of the year. Um honestly, we are going to look back at this. We are living history. We're gonna be in the history books. And as if future generations come down, how we're responding to a pandemic, how we support one another, our schools, what school looked like from it, during it, what we learned from it, all of those things. So as we plan for the end of the year, we are paying attention to all the things we typically would do, knowing that they'll look different, but we still want them to be special. Um we want to communicate with our families, make sure folks know what's going on, and you can see some of the things there that we're paying attention to as well as you know, obviously, our sixth graders. Huge congratulations to them. We'll be, we'll be um reaching out to them as they promote on to seventh grade. They have spent seven years in elementary school. That's a long time, and they deserve a huge, huge round of applause and appreciation. And um we're excited for for them and all that they're gonna do with their lives. And the very last part I'll talk to you about is preparation for the new school year. I did, I did mention it earlier, so I won't go into the details, but the new school year does begin on August twenty-fourth. We plan to have an in-person school experience or a distance learning program available for We plan to have an in-person school experience or a distance learning program available for, both of those available for families to be able to opt into. We've got a committee for reopening and now I talked earlier about expanding that outreach, getting input in different ways now as we get more information and can actually do more specific planning for the fall. We're excited about that. You can imagine all of the work being done and planning for facilities, cleaning and preparation, as well as our strategic planning, which we already would have been doing different things about. But we're going to be actually engaging our community and our teachers as a whole in some strategic planning throughout the summer and into the fall. So things are might be on a little bit different timeline. But you can see here, the reason that all of these things on the left are the icons is because we're really right now still driven by decisions that are outside of our school district. So our local decisions happen once they release or they actually, they, the, the guidelines change so that we can open schools and so that we can have gatherings of children and gatherings of people. Right now, schools are still deemed closed by the health, health agency. And so therefore those gatherings haven't lifted enough for us to, to make any changes. But we anticipate that to change before August 24th. So the very last slide. School does begin on August 24th. And I, once, we might not know a lot, but I promise you, we will be ready and excited to welcome everybody back. I'm happy to take any questions, but you can see it's, there's been a lot going on. Huge thank you to everybody involved with all of this. I couldn't begin to tell you and name, name the people or even the groups of everybody involved in doing great work. But it's, I'm proud to be a part of this great community.
Thank you, Holly. What questions or comments do board members have?
So just a question for Holly, kind of on what you're looking at for the fall and how it's going to look. I know there are public schools that are approved that are K through 12 and they're online. And so they've been doing this well before COVID ever happened. Have you talked to those schools and how they've worked their online program? I know it's much tougher for a K through six school than a nine through 12. Cause I know in a high school, you can pretty much keep a normal day. You can go roll, roll through classes. I mean, I'd like to see at least an online program where the students are engaged for the day. I know it's much, much tougher to do in a K through six. So I was just curious as to what you've gotten information from other people who have run online programs in the past.
Yeah. And you're absolutely right. There are wonderful online programs that actually are structured around a very articulated curriculum and way of making sure that children are learning and, and defined pieces of the program. And yes, and we're excited about actually using tho, that research, all of that research and those research-based programs. And a lot in providing an overall view of what a definition for distance learning is. So as we look to the beginning part of June, we're actually going to be sharing some of that with our teachers and our parents, what we know. Some of, some of them have been involved so far up until this point as well. And then we will be able to gauge their response to that through, as I was saying, probably thought exchange and being able to have people respond to some of those ideas. If they have some of the knowledge about what is a part of some of that research-based distance learning or online program. So you're absolutely right. And yes, our team is doing a great job, led in our instructional services department, specifically Shelley Peterson and Jessica Morales are leading that work.
Have we thought about contracting with some of those entities? Or, you know, is, is that a possibility?
Yeah, I think anything right now is a possibility. So I will take that question back and I, I know they're both listening. So it's a good question. More to come. Thank you for that.
Holly, I had a question about ECDC opening. And can you just give us a little bit of an insight as to what steps are being taken or, or what's being implemented in the classroom to ensure safety for staff and students?
Sure, absolutely. And actually is Shelley Peterson still on the line, Chris? Because she's been intimately involved with all of that. I can speak to it and I know they've done a really good job, but Shelley could actually provide some specifics. I know she's talked with them over the last several days. If you can bring Shelley in. I think you're muted, Shelley.
Yes, sorry. Hi Catherine, your question was specifically to the steps we're talking about to ensure safety of students and staff when we return in the fall.
Actually, now that you've opened ECDC, what does it look like in the classroom right now? How, what's, what are the measurements we're taking or the measures we're taking to keep students and, and staff healthy?
Yeah, so we are practicing all of the social distancing and the, the number limits per classroom. We had nine students who registered and came yesterday. Up to 12 are planned, they're planning on returning. And we have measures in place such as taking temperatures when students arrive. And then all of our staff are, are wearing masks, although they are not required to do so. They are all masked. Children are not wearing masks. The children are then met by ECDC staff and escorted to the classroom. So we're eliminating that transition of individuals between spaces so that there's no cross-contamination, if you will. As students are moved through different parts of the classroom, items are sanitized. Although we were very, it was very great to hear that it is not believed that the virus transfers via contact on surfaces as easily as once believed. So that was very promising for our program. We have gloves on hand, masks on hands. They have set up a station in case a child shows, or, or staff members show symptoms, which has not occurred. And then as I said, adhering closely to those number guidelines. And with the number of students that are in the program currently, that hasn't been a problem at all. And I've had, been in communication with Brigitte Blazey's, our director. And she said it has gone just beautifully, that they, there haven't been any concerns or issues. They have been very easily been able to keep the children at social distancing according to the guidelines.
Thanks Shelley. And just to clarify, is there a hand washing station in that, in those classrooms?
There are.
Using one classroom right now, but okay.
But each of our classrooms are equipped with hand washing stations as well as additional hand sanitizer for all of the adults. And they are, they actually, part of the protocol is to teach safe hand washing and what that looks like for young children. And so students are actually learning about that and practicing that as well.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Shelley, do, do you imagine those protocols would be similar when school starts in the fall? Like would there be temperature taking, those kind of things? I, I know obviously we're, we're waiting for additional guidelines and such. But I mean, like can you imagine that those are some of the things that would be implemented in the fall?
Potentially. There are a lot of recommendations that are, they're referred to as additional measures schools might consider. So depending on where we land in August and what the guidelines are for opening, we'll examine all of those protocols. What I can tell you is that in our planning committee, that's led by our back-to-school planning committee, led by Jenny Ha and Student Services, all of those conversations have been had. So for example, our business services department has already ordered several touchless thermometers so that we can easily scan if needed. We've already talked about procedures for it with, you know, restrictions for numbers in place. What might it look like when parents come to drop children off? And what do those procedures look like? What does pickup look like? So we can reduce crowds gathering. So all of those pieces are things that we are sorting through in our committee. And again, we, we, so we've had conversations. They're in the forefront of our thinking. And we are pausing on some pieces of that until August, until we have those specific guidelines. But all options are a part of our conversation right now.
What kind, what kind of training are you doing for your staff or your planning company doing in the fall? Because in, quite frankly, because you said you have gloves. And I mean, I've worked in a bio-safety lab. I know about cross-contamination. And I see people in the supermarkets with gloves on. And of course, they think they're protected and of course they're touching everything else. And there's cross-contamination going on. People with masks that are, well, I've covered my mouth, but not my nose. Or actually even people pulled it all the way down in order to talk around their neck. Now the inside of the mask is, and, but I, I'm not going to go, I mean, it's, it's people, you see this everywhere. And it's actually more dangerous than just, you know, making sure your hands are washed. So, so, but what kind of safety, you know, you know, teaching people how to use masks and gloves the correct way?
There are actually trainings. Thank you, I've got muted. I'm sorry. I'm back. I tried to move my computer and touch the pad and it was hovering over the microphone. There are actually trainings that are provided through our JPA. And we have made those available currently to all staff that haven't been in teaching positions. But as we look at what fall is, what fall looks like, all of those same trainings will be available to staff. And those are some of our concerns, Scott, actually that you mentioned. You know, masks and children in masks and gloves and the cross-contamination and children touching their faces. And so we are looking at all of the other things that schools might consider very, very carefully. Because what we believe is, and, and what science tells us is safest practice is frequent hand washing and making sure we are monitoring our surfaces. So we've also discussed, you know, what does our custodial support during the day? What might that look like with rounds and wiping and sanitizing handles of doorknobs and, and restroom fixtures so that we can ensure our surfaces are as clean and safe as possible. And really focusing on what is that prevention piece rather than, you know, masks and gloves? And we're not sure that that's safest if that's part of the guideline. Of course, we will absolutely follow whatever guidelines are put in place.
I have a question about, has there been any discussion in that committee about the use of HVAC systems? And whether or not we want to just keep doors and windows open rather than run air conditioning?
Yes, and I know Chris has been working on that and I know he's on, so he could pop in and speak to that. We also know that making fresh air and the outdoor learning areas available and planning to have those in use to ensure that, you know, children are out and then the, out in the fresh air and, and with sunlight. And not sitting in Zula hoops. Our, our goal is to make our return to school as, as really return to normal as possible. And again, I, I will stress that we absolutely will follow every guideline we are given for the safe reopening. But we look forward to reopening school in a manner, manner that it feels more akin to what we're used to and what students are used to so that they can interact and engage with their teachers and their peers.
And with respect to HVAC systems specifically, they actually do use outside air, a certain percentage. And then obviously some of the inside air, but you can't take all the inside air. You suck everything else. There's sort of a cycle that then cycles out. So you have new air every 15 to 18 minutes that it goes through. So we are also looking at what options we might have to, that, that's going to be kind of scientifically supported that might support that cleaning of the air. We very well may be also recommending that you keep your door open while we also run the HVAC. Because if there's no wind or anything, then your air is just going to sit in the rooms. There still needs to be some of the cycling. So we're looking at not only the HVAC system, how we are programming them and then what, what additional potential uses we may need.
So I know you can program for different amounts of that inside, outside air, right? You can have that ratio. You can program that ratio, I believe, in these HVAC systems.
Yeah, how much you're opening basically the flue that will allow the amount of outside air? There are a couple of things to consider and Mike Yalas has been looking into it and, and we've talked about it. There, at a certain level, are you causing problems with moisture and things? So we need to calibrate it in a manner that's not going to cause other problems. And so we, we were definitely looking at it and making sure the professionals give us guidance so that we can get the most fresh air in while not causing other issues with our facilities or with our classrooms that were unintended.
And then filter systems in the HVAC?
Yeah, we are stealing my thunder in 9.1, but we, we have replaced all the filters. There's been a cleaning of the coils and a checking of all the ducting. And so there's been a combination of reacting to the pandemic and, and taking steps that we could take during school closure, not knowing how long it would be in the immediate aftermath. And then planning for, preparing for the 2020, 21 school year and looking at steps that we can take preventively upfront and then planning for, and starting to think through things like Shelley was sharing about our staffing and do we need to adjust hours that people are there? And how are we ensuring that those high-touch surfaces are cleaned and sanitized on a regular basis? There's sort of the ongoing planning for it and the thinking around it that will allow us to open, both following the guidelines of being ahead of the game in, in safety for our kids and our families and our teachers.
Thanks, Chris. Shelley, I have a question for you. And first of all, thank you and your staff and all the teachers and for all the efforts in distance learning. It's been a huge undertaking and we really appreciate it, even though we know we'd always rather be in the classroom. But given that we've been dealing with distance learning and obviously the, the teaching and learning has not been as robust as it would normally be during these few months. I know that parents are looking to the summer and wondering, what can I do to make sure my kid is as up, up to speed as possible going into the school year? I'm wondering what thought you've given to providing proposed, you know, schedules and, and guidance for, for families to effectively continue distance learning on their own? And what is, you know, what is recommended for kids at different age levels? And also have you given any consideration to having the Chromebooks or other devices stay with the families over the summer so that they can continue to have a focus on, on education and be as up to speed as they can be before the school year starts?
Yes, thank you. And we have had conversation about what might it look like if we provide some guidance for learning options over the summer? We are also looking at, we do have plans to collect the Chromebooks, but what we're looking at is specific targeted support or intervention that we might give to, might provide to certain groups of students when we're able to gather in that manner. And in doing so, we would go through another checkout process for the Chromebooks. And actually the research relating to your question, should we leave Chromebooks in the hands of students over the summer? The research actually doesn't support the success of having a device unless there is actually learning and support for the learning that is going on along with it. It, students make very little progress when it's in that type of setting because then it's just a device. So that's why we're looking carefully about if, if students have the devices, how do we couple that with some sort of recommendations for academic, academic learning? But we are also looking at what programs that students currently have access to that are part of our program. Can we continue to give access to students in, for example, our Wonders program? So there are plenty, there are lots of activities and reading and pages of learning that support certain concepts. And so we are making arrangements and examining what, which of those can we leave open for our students to access over the course of the summer. But what we do know is we need to get the Chromebacks, Chromebooks back in, check them in. And then for students in need, we may go through a second redistribution process based on programs we might design this summer. Thank you. Other questions from work as you are?
Yeah, so Holly, is, if, if I understand it correctly, it sounds like what we're trying to do right now is you're going to have, start school essentially in, in the fall and, and have it to be as normal as it can be and follow all the guidelines for safety and health. And then another track would be if people are not comfortable with that, then they would potentially do, they would do the distance learning. What, what if people, if, if they're in school for some reason, they feel like they, is there going to be flexibility in, in any of this? Is it going to be like, can one transfer from one to the other? Like what if somebody says, you know, I, I'm not comfortable. I feel like there's too many cases popping up and, and, and do they, are they going to, what, what happens at that point? Do they, when they're feeling like they're, they're stuck at school? You know, what, what kind of is the thinking behind that?
Right. And, and a lot, again, there's so
Right, and and a lot, again, there's so much that's not known and is changing, like as we were saying, you know, a lot will change between now and August twenty fourth still. And um and and probably will continue to fluctuate as we move ahead and we don't know how exactly that will play out. That said, I mean, it's important to be able to plan and design a program knowing some constants. So you know, there needs to be some, we we would hope for some kind of a commitment to this type of distance learning program. It really is based on as in as we were talking about earlier, uh you know, well thought out, research-based online learning. And um and that said, if things change and a parent would think that a different situation would be better for their family, their child, or their children. Absolutely, we can look to see where is there a room for in the in the program, either going into distance learning or the other way. Um and to see where we could act, you know, place that student as we always do if that happens during the school year and there's a request for a transfer for some reason or you know, within programs or schools or the districts. So we won't necessarily have space everywhere in every grade level in every program. So that would be a consideration. Um so that's why it's important for parents to have as much information upfront to make a decision, you know, as far as confirming at that point in time, knowing that we'll we we want to be flexible as well, given pandemic.
We are um we are working to closely align our distance learning program and looking at the materials and curriculum so that it very closely aligns with what's happening in school. So that in the event a student needed to switch to a distance learning program or um if we were closed for a brief period of time. We believe that what we're setting up in distance learning will put us in a really, really great position should we have to accommodate for a brief period of time, rather than this emergency um type of situation we were faced with on March sixteenth. So the planning and preparation we're doing now will support students with whatever situation we're faced with in the fall.
Thanks. Shelley, do you mind like to the extent that you can, like what what do you think the uh distance learning might look like? Um I know that it's more robust and and I've heard that, but um I don't know if you can give any more additional details about that right now.
W- we have some preliminary um details based on the research and Jessica Morales has been working uh very intensively on this. And based on the research, we have some broad types of conditions or bullets and what we expect um will be in place with distance learning. And we really are um looking to have a team of teachers join us in that thinking to to flesh it out a little bit more. But initially, um now some of the the things that we know are constants uh that we will expect that will be constants is we will will use the curriculum that we are using um in our in you know, brick and mortar classrooms uh with some enhancements in some of the content areas because um there hasn't been as nice a transfer as we would have liked. So we're looking at that. Um we're looking at regularly scheduled instructions. So um for distance learn when we move into distance learning, we are hopeful that there'll be teachers within our within Delmar Union who will be interested and we've already heard from a few that if we have a distance learning platform, they would like to be a distance learning teacher. And so with that, um for people who have really enjoyed it, we we will look to have a regularly scheduled school day where a distance learning teacher will be teaching all of the content throughout the day at periodic periods throughout the day. And so that is another condition um that we will look to meet. Another one is that um we believe that it will be important for there to be some in-person contact. So so for a sh- a small portion of the week, um we would hope that our teachers would be able to meet dependent on the comfort level of the family in person to either give an assessment or just meet the family in person, meet the student in person, perhaps some provide some small group instruction. So those are some of the broad components we're we're looking at right now based on the research we've done we've done. Um that um we think will be necessary for it to be an effective program. And that still is all to, you know, we've we're looking at scheduling our meetings in July where we can do some intensive work with teachers who are interested in that program as well as um some of our administrators.
Thank you. Um and and one last question, uh just I I know that uh there's been some parent engagement through like the surveys and I appreciate that. Um can you explain a little bit more how the thought exchange works and how uh people will be able to provide more feedback? A little bit more of the dialogue that 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 may offer?
Yes, so we're we're really excited about thought exchange and what thought exchange allows us to do is ask a question. And then that question and the feedback and comments from community, it actually is alive and continues to grow based on the comments we receive. And so we will craft some questions very carefully. Uh we'll give some information about programs at that we know now and then ask the question so parents and community and teachers can give us input. Our plan right now is to do two separate thought exchange, um one for teachers and then one for community where we can hear from them, what's important for you in a distance learning program? Um what are some some tenants of it that will be important to you at if you are need to make that choice for distance learning? And um it's like a um uh a real time cloud of active engagement that allows community thoughts and conversation to build and grow upon one another. And then we can take all of that information, look at it, disaggregate it, look for themes, and then move forward from there. So that's to come. Um I think as early as next week, that thought exchange will be open and available to both teachers and our community.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
I just had one more I comment is I know Holly, Shelley, you guys are gonna do the best you can with all of this. I look at it as an opportunity uh yeah to build what's great about an online learning program and what's great about the bricks and mortar. And we'll have a stronger program at the end where we take the best of both worlds and incorporate that together. So I'm looking, you know, I think you guys will have the best uh program uh that 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 one can find. Uh certainly in the state or in in the country because I know we've done that well in the past and you guys will continue to do it. Uh you'll put together a strong program and we'll be able to make this an opportunity to be able to show other other districts how it's done. So I have confidence in you guys.
Thank you, Scott. It is it is a bit like building the plane as we fly it, but um uh we are very excited and as we talk about in District Design twenty twenty two, uh we talk about a personalized education and we talk about transforming what education looks like for children. So I do think this presents us with an extraordinary opportunity to really act on that for for some children and some families and that um what we develop might end up being an option that that some families and children will really thrive in. So we do see it as an opportunity and we appreciate your support and kind comments. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much for the update and we still have lots more to cover tonight, so let's move on to item eight point two, the board review, first reading of the proposed DNUSD two thousand twenty one twenty two school year calendar. Dr. McClurg.
So this calendar is uh presented today for you. As you know, we do collaborate very closely with San DeGuito High School District as well as the other local elementary districts that actually feed into San DeGuito as well, trying to align our calendars as much as possible. So uh the calendar brought before you does for the most part align beginning of the year and end of the year are almost the same. And then the holidays during the middle of the year are almost the same as well. And for your information, we did attach San DeGuito's calendar to this board item. There are a couple of minor exceptions. We appreciate and are glad that San DeGuito um when they approved this calendar actually made a change in February because for a long time we were not aligned. They took a Friday and a Monday and then our children had Monday and Tuesday and the rest of the week off. So now San DeGuito has Monday and Tuesday. So that was wonderful because we've really been collaborating on that for a long time. They also have a couple of days in January that are between their semesters. It doesn't make sense for us to have those days there. But for the most part, our calendars are aligned and that's what this calendar shows you. They did make the move to start school earlier in the fall and then end school earlier in the spring. So this calendar reflects that as well. It's not this year, but the following year.
I just wanna say thank you for aligning that February break. I know that's been in the a thorn in the side of many families who have had kids in both districts. Um so it's it's great that we at least can get more days overlapping so families can spend that time together. Um I do I have a question about the 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 staggered like first day and last day of school. Can you explain why they don't match?
Sure, we've always had the first day, we always start a day earlier and that seems to work just fine. Our children are ready to start on Monday and actually the last day of school then ends up being one day different, which our families very much appreciate because our sixth grade promotions are on that second to the last day of school and all of the high school and middle school promotions and graduations would then be the day following. So there's no conflict. Otherwise, if we have it all on the same day, families are forced to pick between elementary, middle and high school. And our families very much appreciate, especially the last day. We get out one day earlier than the high schools and then our children actually get to go to a middle school or high school promotion as well or graduation if they have those children in their families. So it actually works out well.
Thank you. Any other questions? This is only the first read. There's no board action right now. Okay. Great. Um then we will move to item nine point one, Board Report Facilities Preparation for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one school year. And here he is again, Crystal Alte. You're back up.
Very much, President Halpern, uh members of the board, Superintendent McClurg. Uh I am here tonight to speak on the facilities preparation for our twenty twenty one twenty 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 one school year. Uh and we have uh started speaking about this just a little bit in our uh previous conversation, but I'll go into a little bit of more detail. And as I said, uh when we first closed schools, uh the first day that we were closed, March sixteenth, and as we moved forward, we actually had uh an our staff start with sanitizing and cleaning to really look at addressing the um unknown as to whether we would be coming back during the current school year. And so during that uh initial closure, we started off with closing and we went through a number of steps. Uh forward, uh all of our classrooms are sanitized and deep cleaned. There is uh as we've gone through this closure, floors have been stripped and waxed. We've gone through the process of sanitizing really every space from our play structures to our lunch tables to our classrooms to our bathrooms. And by doing some of this deep cleaning, uh and as we talked about the HVAC, the filters and the coils and getting in there. Uh we were able to with the really hard work of Mike Yalas and his staff, getting in there and getting it cleaned. Uh they were able to get much of the summer cleaning that they would have done done uh by about this time and are now able to be really supportive of our teaching staff as we are going through the process of returning items to our students and preparing for next year. And so I really have to applaud our maintenance operation facility custodial staff for for the hard work they've done already. Uh and then as we're planning towards the twenty twenty one school year, uh we are looking towards the number of facilities preparations we'll be doing. So as we look ahead, uh we've already spoken a little bit about the idea that there will need to be daily cleaning and sanitizing. So we'll be looking at what do the uh schedules look like and how do we ensure that we are cleaning and sanitizing those high touch surfaces? Um we've added things like sanitizing foam dispensers, so hand sanitizer in multiple areas. Uh we know that hand washing is number one, but if we can have that uh sixty seventy percent alcohol hand sanitizer, we can also kill virus and have people in a regular basis when they're in those high uh traffic areas like the admin entrances and bathrooms and hallways. Some of these places where we know a lot of people are traveling, ensuring that we have another line for for sanitizing on your person when when people are moving through those. Now, as I talked about those frequently touched surfaces, we will be disinfecting them multiple times a day. So looking at what are schedules for bathrooms that we can go in regularly, things like doorknobs and handles and rails, uh those will need to happen regularly. Uh as we start looking, um as Dr. McClurg and um Ms. Peterson shared, we'll we'll be planning out what do things like lunches and other things look like. But we'll be planning with that with both um student safety in mind, interaction of our students and ensuring that our maintenance operations staff are able to um sanitize and keep uh that safety in in mind. Um we have FDA-approved antimicrobial and antibacterial soap that's installed in all the areas. And then we have been, uh as was mentioned a little bit earlier, uh buying stands and things like that so that we can have multiple areas for both the hand sanitizer and our hand washing. And as was asked a little earlier, looking at staff protocols, uh hand washing, um training for all staff responsible for that cleaning and disinfecting. And that's a combination as um Dr. Wooden shared, you know, being able to use the PPE appropriately, at least that we're not actually impacting ourselves throughout the process. But it's also uh making sure that our maintenance and operations staff, um they go through regular trainings and um actually uh Mike Yalas runs uh quarterly meetings where we keep them up to date. So we you'll see some pictures at the end uh where we also have the sanitizer sprays and making sure that we are trained and our staff knows how to use those so that we are getting the most out of the cleaning and sanitizing we're doing. Um one item that's uh uh Assistant Superintendent Peterson, Shelley Peterson spoke about was some of the JPA training. So our Joint Power Authority does a number of trainings that we take advantage of in the district. And one that we've worked on is uh the use of Clorox wipes in schools. Actually, you can't use them unless you've gone through a training. And so um one of those trainings was buried in like an hour-long integrated test management. And so again, Mike Yalas has worked with our County Office of Education, um the JPA, and getting that moved into something that's really more uh effective for teachers and instructional assistants and people who are uh using them on a daily basis so that we can be trained, we can use them appropriately, and then you have the ability to use items that we use in our day-to-day lives and use them in an appropriate manner that's safe in the school. And then we've talked about the safety equipment and one other item is uh plexiglass barriers in front of um in the front offices. And so we've put those in on order and it's just um kind of a sneeze guard and a protection for our office staff. They will be uh short term. We know that this won't last forever, but they will be able to be there. And then we're actually buying them in a manner where we might have other uses we can use from them, so we're not just using them and and getting rid of them. And then finally, as I said, you can see here uh with the spraying and being able to spray the sanitizer, all three of these pictures show them um in a classroom, on our playgrounds, on our lunch tables, ensuring that we're using it appropriately. Our our staff is trained and then we're keeping all of these spaces sanitized and clean. Um this will be a regular occurrence as we move forward. We have students back on campus. Uh and even to the point of as we have staff back on campus, we have had uh set it up so that when they're coming in, we have a way to uh mark a classroom, ensure that our staff is uh cleaning and and following up on those classrooms, but not um doing duplicative work of cleaning classroom that nobody's been in. So we're really being purposeful and getting it done and making sure that our staff can be uh on the ball um on a regular basis. From the ECDC that we just opened up to our classrooms to our teachers coming back. So a a big uh round of applause for our maintenance operations facility staff. They've done an amazing job. Um and then the committee work that um Jenny Huh is leading will lead to further uh work and planning that we'll do so that we can open school safely and within um supporting those guidelines that we'll get from Health and Food Services, County Office of Education in the state. Scott, I'd be happy to answer any questions in the preparation that we are currently working on.
Do you have any further stuff? Go ahead.
Yeah, I think there have been talk about previously mentioned like hand washing stations or uh is there any still is that still uh in discussion right now or?
Absolutely, and we're investigating all options we can bring forward. So um we are, we've already put on order uh the hand sanitizer and hand sanitization spaces. We're looking at how we can increase opportunities for hand washing. Um there will also be, as we're looking at planning, there's um as as Shelley talked about, if we're looking at what is the guidance on, you know, how many students? Ideally, we can have all of our students back. If we have um numbers and capacity that we have to follow, that will play a role. We'll be ensuring that we're our students will have um safety first and opportunities for hand sanitizer, hand washing, um in between activities, in between uh and especially if we are at a point where we're eating in classes or things like that or eating on on the lunch tables.
So Chris, um any thought about, are you gonna need extra janitorial staff to do all this cleaning? Are we gonna have to hire that? Is that in the budget if 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 so? Uh that that we're gonna get?
So I think Scott, we we have not budgeted that out yet because we are still, as we talked about, it's still a little unclear as to what the guidelines will be. And so we are looking at, um as Dr. McClurg shared, there are a number of ways that people have looked at if we do have restrictions in the number of the capacity that we can have on uh how we support that. And so we are, we are doing some work and thinking about how long does it take to sanitize and clean a room? Um if we need to sanitize rooms and if we do have uh students who maybe we don't have, we aren't back full staff, what is the time we need in between if we're gonna sanitize and there's multiple groups that come in? So we are thinking through. So we are thinking through the timing we'd need and that will lead to schedules and are there needs for a shift in schedule? Or if we did need, uh, staff to ensure student safety, we'd obviously look at that as an option. But it is an option that we, uh, necessarily will have to move forward with at this point.
Okay. And, uh, another question is, I I've seen that there are sprays that supposedly coat surfaces and will last for a period of time in terms of preventing the, uh, the virus or killing the virus. I don't know, uh, anything about those or the safety of those for use in an elementary school classroom. Or I mean, more, not really more of the classroom. I'm thinking more of the lunch tables and the play surfaces, things like that that could be sprayed very easily. Is that, is that something you guys have looked into?
It's something that we're starting to look into. It's funny you bring that up because I said something like that just last week and we've started to do a little bit of reading into it. Um, so I don't have an answer for you, Scott, but it's something we're investigating as well.
Another question quickly. Uh, have you thought about, uh, upgrading the water stations or anything like that or disinfecting the the water stations? And, uh, you know, so the kids, when they're getting their water, um, that won't kind of get contaminated like when they're touching the water pounds and stuff like that?
So there's two pieces. One, um, of the benefits from, uh, some of the water bottle fillers that we've used is that that actually reduces the touching. So using those will be a benefit, um, and something that will, you know, a real positive from from, um, installing. Uh, those will also in areas where we have, uh, you know, spigots and kids potentially being able to use. We will be looking at what that looks like and that would certainly be a high touch area that we would be, um, sanitizing very regularly.
Sorry, Chris, are the water bottle bottle fillers at every school?
They are either at every school or they are on the, um, planning to install for every school.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Okay, um, thank you, Chris, and don't go away because nine point two is once again Crystal Humpty. Board Report Facilities Update on Pacific Islands Ranch School Number Nine.
Thank you. So thank you again. Uh, our facilities update Pacific Islands Ranch School Number Nine. Uh, as Dr. McClurg shared, we had some very exciting news in that escrow closed and DMSD has taken ownership of our Pacific Islands Ranch School Number Nine. Uh, we are excited about, uh, the prospect, uh, not the prospect, the fact that we now own that property. Um, so project next steps, we actually just had a, we have a, an every other week meeting right now with OBR Architecture, Nyrksen Hall Construction. Uh, we are at what is called fifty percent of our construction documents. And so that's, um, we're halfway done with construction documents that would then be, um, submitted to DSA. Uh, we are doing two increments with this project as well to allow us to do some of the groundwork and site work, uh, first and kind of bid that out and then, uh, move to increment two. Uh, we'll be able to time them in a manner that where we see, uh, the increment two coming out of DSA, it should mean that we're done with the increment one. So you can do the, you know, the further grading that we need to do, the site utility, some of those pieces. Um, we're excited that we actually have our our dates already on the books, uh, for July first to do that first piece of DSA submittal with, uh, Pacific Islands Ranch School Number Nine. And it again is all still on pace to, uh, start construction in fall or, um, fall slash winter of twenty twenty, leading to a completion of the project in, uh, well in advance of the start of school for twenty twenty-two. So that will be done in spring of twenty twenty-two to again be able to set the, uh, culture and the name of the school and get, uh, some administrative staff and parents involved prior to starting the school with a big renewal. We also have, uh, rendering. I appreciate Jason Romero and Gilbert and his staff. Uh, we worked with Partie and after we had gotten to the point where we were closing escrow, we reached out and said, uh, by the way, could we keep the sign? Because, um, they've already got a sign that's in there and we are going to repurpose that sign with instead of, um, a proposed Delmar School, a future Delmar Elementary School, and we're going to be putting our own graphics for the school so that we can highlight the fact that our Delmar School will be on that property, uh, very soon.
That's not up already, is it, Chris?
No, it's not up. That is a, uh, Jason and I, we've had some conversations and they gave, he did a little mockup that he just sent. And I thought I'm going to put it in the presentation because we're we're putting this together, we'll finalize and then we'll get it reprinted and put on top of that sign.
Yeah, I was going to go out there and take a picture of it or something like that.
We we hope to have it up shortly though. So I, um, hope that the next time I update you, we will be able to show you a live picture of a sign that's up at the new site.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome. And, uh, that's our quick update on Pacific Islands Ranch School Number Nine. Things are moving along smoothly and we're really excited. It was, you know, it it has taken a while to get that property in hand, but it was pretty exciting to see the email that said that escrow was closing and that, um, it was it was now moving into our hands. Um, and thanks to Kathy Burks and Mark Pong, uh, for all their work in getting that property in our hands.
Yeah, I just want to echo that and say great job to the staff, great job to to everybody that worked on that. And it's, uh, you know, you guys did a wonderful job and I'm glad that it's now in, uh, in in our, in DMSD property. So thank you so much.
Yes, congratulations. Very exciting. Um, and don't go anywhere because it's Chris again for the board approval of Torrey Hills School Field Upgrade. And I believe this one actually is an action item.
Yes, this is an action item. Uh, we, uh, have been working towards a Torrey Hills Field School Field Upgrade. And we've shared a little bit about this with the board. And so at this point, we wanted to, uh, bring this to the board to share a little bit more about the project, uh, that we're proposing. Uh, we will be asking board approval, uh, and then should the board approve, there are are no monetary impacts at this point. What we would then lead to is, um, bit getting bids back on the project and coming to the board with a proposal for the actual work for the project. So, uh, as we've looked at the Torrey Hills Field Upgrade, we know that Torrey Hills, uh, is field is one that has really had some issues with govers. And we've had, uh, longstanding issues. Uh, we know that we needed an upgrade, um, and really to the point where we had some, um, concerns in student safety. And so we will be replacing all the grass and we will do some gofer mitigation. And we've, uh, worked with architects to, um, investigate and find a, uh, product and a process that will help to keep the govers out. So there's a a mesh layer that will run underneath and there's some kind of, uh, rocks that go with it. But it's far enough down that we can grow grass and we can have saw, a nice grass on top, but not deep enough that it is appealing to govers to, um, make their holes. And so that would run the whole length of the field and go up to the fencing. Uh, we'll be also running a, uh, DG path around the fields to improve, uh, accessibility and student and, um, student ability when they're doing, you know, running laps or walking or those things so that it has a nice even trail around. Uh, we're removing two backstops and replacing with one backstop with some small bleachers and a dugout. And when you look at it, uh, there are currently backstops in this corner and this corner. We will be removing the current backstop in the northeast corner, replacing with only one backstop in the, uh, western corner. Small bleachers in the back, um, small dugouts similar to what you'd find at, um, uh, Delmar Heights right now. Um, similar to some of the the backstopping that you find some of other sites where they may play play ball. Um, there's still more than enough space for a full soccer field and extra grass. So there'll be, uh, the Torrey Hills Field will both be upgraded and they'll have the ability to have full use of their field, um, during the school day. So, um, definitely will be an improvement to the field and, uh, also improvements to ADA access and the ability for our students and then our community to, um, be able to walk or run or use the exterior with that DG track. And so, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we would also request the board, um, pending that, uh, board approval, um, to move forward with the next steps of the project and bid it out and come back to what they price, um, to actually complete the project this summer.
Did you talk to Little League about it, Chris? About in, uh, talking about what it looks like and how would, any thoughts about it?
Yeah, we have, um, Ted, we have been in contact with Little League, uh, and they have, uh, provided some input. They, uh, you know, as we've gone through the whole process of looking at the, uh, items and the the amenities that we have on our on our fields across the district and then specifically with Delmar Heights and then Torrey Hills. Uh, we've gotten that input and it, um, looks good. So I've been in contact with the current and the former presidents of, um, Little.
They sound like they're happy?
They do.
Other questions? Scott?
No, I don't have a question. So.
It looks like Scott's getting ready to, uh, move approval.
Yeah, I'll move for approval.
Okay, is there a second? A second. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. There are no more questions. Uh, member Wooden?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Mayor Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
An aye for me, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we are at item ten point one, Board Review First Reading Proposed Two Thousand Twenty, Twenty-One Budget and Ending Fund Balances with Kathy Burks. And you guys know that while we're waiting, Chris is the one behind the scenes doing a lot of this call. Also, in addition to maintenance and facilities and, uh, planning, so he's really the jack of all trades in our district and we appreciate that. Okay, I see Kathy and Mark coming on.
Do we have any more public comments for any of the, uh, items that are on on here or?
Yeah, ten, ten point three.
Okay.
We have one comment in ten point three. That's the last one. Don't let me forget that one. Yeah.
Great. Um, good evening, Board of, uh, President Halpern and Governing Board of Trustees, Dr. McClurg. Um, Mark Pong, Director of Finance, and I, uh, will like to present to you, uh, for your information, the first read of the proposed twenty twenty-one budget. Next slide, please, Chris. Thank you. Um, in this presentation, we'll be discussing the two thousand nineteen, twenty, uh, General Fund Estimated Actuals. We'll be updating that with you, uh, what the proposed twenty twenty-one budget is and looking ahead, um, how we monitor our contributions to restricted programs, um, some information on the May revise, uh, basic aid reduction, uh, planning for COVID nineteen response, other events, um, funds that have been affected by the COVID nineteen and June adoption for all funds. Next slide. With Mark? You see Mark Pong?
He's on the call. Let me see if he's.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Um, right now I'll update you on the general fund. So we have the nineteen twenty estimated actuals and I'll update you on the changes since second interim. So at second interim, on the revenue side, we were projecting about sixty-three point two million dollars in revenue. Uh, with our budget adjustments, we, uh, our net budget adjustments of a hundred and eleven thousand. We're anticipating the estimated actuals to come in at sixty-three point three million. So some of those changes, we are increasing the property tax revenue. So at second interim, we were at four point nine percent. And now we're at five point two percent above the eighteen nineteen, uh, revenue. We're making an adjustment to our federal revenue. Um, the way that our federal revenue works is that it's on a reimbursement basis. So if we don't spend the funds, um, we don't receive the funds. However, due to, um, the COVID nineteen, there's, um, flexibility on the federal funds. So those will all carry over to the twenty twenty-one school year and will recognize the revenue at that time. We, um, adjusted our lottery revenue just based upon our estimate. And local revenue, we've had some adjustments to our special ed funding and, um, our fundraising donations are budgeted when we receive them. And then also from the state, we received, um, some funds under SB one one seven for COVID nineteen local agency response funds. And we've received about seventy-two thousand dollars, um, from the state and Kathy will get into that a little more later. Next slide. On the expenditure side, at second interim, we were estimating sixty-three point five million in expenditures. Due to the closures, we made some budget adjustments that net to about one point two million dollars in reductions. Um, bringing our estimated actuals for nineteen twenty to sixty-two point three million. The some of the key assumptions on the expenditure side were that, um, we had updated salary and benefits based upon our two remaining months, May and June. We had some unspent funds due to substitutes, um, and then we also had some unfilled vacancies. On the operating side, we reduced the budget for, um, materials and supplies that we didn't end up ordering. Um, our transportation for our special education, um, was discontinued. We have reduced utility costs and some of our other contracted services as well as our school sites. Um, due to the closures, we'll not be spending all their funds and we will be carrying those over to next year. We also had to make a increase to our transfer out due to our cafeteria fund. We'll be having to make a seventy-five thousand dollar contribution estimated, um, and Kathy will review that a little more later also. When we look at the ending balance at second interim, we were at a decrease to the fund balance of about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. But with all these adjustments, we are looking at an increase to the fund balance of about a million dollars. So, um, I think over the whole meeting, we've been kind of discussing a few unknowns. So it's very important that we are prudent with our reserves right now. As we look to online learning and possibility of additional cleaning and supplies, um, we're still determining what all that looks like. So when we look at the reserve, um, the beginning balance was at just under fourteen million. The ending balance, we're looking at just under fifteen million. So the the reserve is made up of our assigned fifteen percent, order approved fifteen percent minimum reserve, which is nine point three million. We're still looking forward to the adoption of our science curriculum, so we're reserving seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that. And then we have our state required three percent at one point nine million, leaving our unassigned total at two point four million. So the percentage of the unassigned amount in the reserve is twenty-three point one percent. And we're also continuing to reserve funds for the future operation of School Number Nine. And in Fund Seventeen at the end of this year, we'll have eight hundred and six thousand.
Mark, before you go on, could you just clarify what the expenses, the expense savings were associated with being closed these last few months? You mentioned it, but I wasn't sure if the million dollar number was all of that or if it's going to the reserve or if part of it is due to other things.
Chris, can you go back to one slide before? Okay, so actually, can you go one slide before that? So if you look here on our salaries and benefits, the first three lines, we reduced about eight hundred thousand. And that's due to substitutes and vacancies and, um, just unspent, um, salary and benefits. And then we also made reductions of about, uh, four hundred and ninety thousand on the operations side because of the closures and unspent, um, costs.
Thank you.
Yes, Chris, I think we're on slide. So now we'll review the general fund and what we're proposing for the twenty twenty-one school year. So I'm looking at our revenue. We are about sixty-three point seven million dollars. Just if you can go to the next slide. Twenty-one school year. We'll also be purchasing large screen monitors for the kindergarten first grades. And we'll be having a Chromebook refresh district wide. We're looking at the transportation costs for the Delmar Heights rebuild. And finally, um, we'll also be transferring, continuing to reserve for School Number Nine operating costs at about seven hundred thousand dollars in the twenty twenty-one school year, building up to the one point three million estimated operating cost. So when we're looking at our fund balance, uh, that first line has a dash because we have a balanced budget. We're proposing a balanced budget right now. So I'll draw your attention to the bottom line, uh, second to last line where we have our unrestricted reserve percentage, which is at twenty-two point five percent. And then the Fund Seventeen reserve for School Number Nine is at one point five million at the end of next year. And on the next slide, we'll detail more about the reserves. So there's a new, our requirement that we, um, justify what we have excess reserves for above the three percent state required reserve. So our un-unassigned balance is fifteen point nine million. Our reserve is one point nine for the minimum three percent. So that means we have to. Our reserve is one point nine for the minimum three percent. So that means we have to justify about fourteen million dollars. So that fourteen million dollars, we are reserving two point one million as our basic aid stabilization. As we know, during the last recession, we had something known as a fair share basic aid reduction, which Kathy will get into a little more on upcoming slides. And we're continuing to reserve for the pension costs, increased pension costs, our post-employment benefits and future obligations. And then again, we have the science curriculum and then our fifteen percent board policy. And our, the one point five million for school number nine. So that's the fourteen million that we have in our reserves above the three percent. So unless there's any questions about what we're proposing to next year, Kathy will review what we're looking for, what we're looking towards.
So in this next section, next slide, please, we will be looking at, you know, the monitoring of our contributions to the restricted programs, which is our special education and our restrictive maintenance. Some of the comments from May revised, basic aid reduction, the planning for the COVID-19, the other funds that have been affected by the pandemic, and bringing to you the June adoption for all our funds, district funds for approval. Next slide. So as we look at our special education expenditures, I'm going to go back to 2018-19 because we haven't finalized 2019-20. We still need to input some information into the KSMAS, which is a special ed program that we use. So based upon actuals, we spent about eleven point five million on special ed, which supported six hundred and seventy students in programs such as special day class, our specialized academic support, speech and language, preschool, and extended school year. This eleven point five million included program staff, which is our teachers, our specialists, instructional aides, and administration. It also includes the materials and supplies, our contracted services, transportation, and other agency agreements. Next slide, please. So when we take a look at our special education revenue, you can see based upon actuals from fifteen sixteen through eighteen nineteen. The bottom line is our, the funding we see, received from the federal government. The next line in green is from the state. You can see that those are very flat. We know that special education continues to be an underfunded program. And with the blue line is what the district is contributing toward this program. Next slide. So our restricted maintenance contribution during the Great Recession, the state allowed flexibility toward the amount that districts could contribute to restrictive maintenance. So prior to July one of 2019, the district would, was contributing about two percent. We had a peak in fifteen sixteen, which reflected the partial modernization that we did at Carmel Delmar School. And then you can see at nineteen twenty, it increasing to three percent, and that three percent is based upon total expenditures of the district budget. Next slide. So in our, in the May revise, that has not been budgeted yet, the governor is proposing a six hundred and forty-five dollar per ADA for special education equalization. Now that number was at six hundred and sixty, it's dropped to six forty-five. So we are awaiting to see what comes out in June to determine if it will stabilize at six forty-five, or will it be less? Currently, we are, the district's receiving about five hundred and fifty-seven per ADA through our cellphone. In addition to that, which is wonderful, it affects all districts, is a reduction to the pension clause for CalSTRS and also CalPERS, which is about two percent. So that is based upon total salary, and we have not reflected this bad amount in the budget until we receive more, you know, better numbers or making sure that that goes through at the percentage that is proposed in June. There's also some federal funding with the CARES Act. And then I just, you know, want to revisit our fair share reduction that we had gone through back during the Great Recession. So next slide. So just a brief reminder, the Great Recession occurred during two thousand seven, two thousand thirteen. So in addition to any reductions in property tax revenues due to the economic downturn that occurred during that time, community-funded school districts had a reduction to their categorical funding, which was referred to as basic aid reduction or fair share. Next slide. So as you can see, the Delmar Union School District used to receive about almost three point five million dollars in categorical funding. And in nine-ten, the district had a fair share or a contribution of a million dollars. And it increased year after year with two thousand twelve, thirteen contribution back to the state of two point five million. So over this time period, we had a basic aid reduction of about seven point three million. The one million seventy-three is now what is our minimum, minimum state aid that we receive. Next slide. So what happened during the Great Recession? And how did the basic aid reduction affect us? So in oh-eight, oh-nine, there was some stimulus money that we had received, so it helped support the, the general fund, and it was specific to ways that those funds had to be spent, and it was called ARA, A-R-R-A. And then we also were able to continue to use those funds in oh-nine, ten. But as you see in eleven, twelve, and twelve thirteen, we started to deficit spend, and it was reflected and a result of the reduction that we were recognizing due to the fair share our district was contributing back to the state. Next slide. So what is the potential basic aid reduction we can see? We don't know right now. We know that our local controlled funding formula districts, our neighboring districts are projected to receive a two point three one percent COLA on the base grant. This is based upon the, the formula. And then a ten percent reduction is applied to that amount, which is an effective reduction of about seven point nine two percent. And the way the formula is done is that once the base grant is, is reduced, it affects the supplemental and concentration grant, which also will have a reduction. There's also recognizing a reduction to categorical funding. And this seven point nine two percent reduction is projected to occur over the next three years. Along with the reduction in the funding, the state funding for, through LCFF, there will also be cash deferrals, which means the, the cash that they would typically get in one month may be deferred over a few months, and it may cross fiscal years, which becomes a problem with, with cash flow. So one thing that is discussed is with basic aid districts, what is their fair share? One point is that we talked about the minimum state aid that the district received at one point, almost one point two million. So is it a ten percent reduction on the minimum state aid, which could be a hundred and seventeen thousand? Based upon constitution, the minimum that we should, could receive is a hundred and twenty dollars per ADA. So effectively, that could be a reduction of six hundred and eighty-eight thousand. So we are awaiting to hear additional information in regards to this. Again, this is not reflected in our budget, but we are setting aside in our reserves for basic aid stabilization so that we can be able to react to it if we need to through our reserves. Next slide. So planning for COVID-19 response. Next slide, please. We received, as Mark had mentioned, seventy-two thousand for SB one-seventeen. And what we can use that amount, that those funds for is to maintain our nutrition services, to clean and disinfect our facilities, purchasing personal protective equipment, and our materials for distance learning. Next. We are applying for FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency. So we have, Mark has been right on, standing on top and listening to the webinars on what is eligible cost, which is, you know, disinfection of the facilities, personal protective equipment, and overtime costs related to COVID-19. What this is doing is it provides us an opportunity, if we need it, to be able to apply for seventy-five percent of the cost. It requires the district to, to cover twenty-five percent, and it cannot be duplicated expenditure. And we have to exhaust our local funds first before we can move forward to FEMA. But there's a process that goes through that, so we're, we are beginning that process. Next slide. So because of this pandemic, we have two funds that have been affected by this. Next slide. It is our cafeteria fund, so we'll be reviewing our 2019, 2020 estimated actuals. Next slide. So at nineteen twenty, at adoption, we were balanced. Because we are no longer serving lunches, and because we have expenditures, we are to, in order to balance or this budget, we will be contributing from the general fund approximately seventy-five thousand to Fund Thirteen. Next slide. So what we are currently doing, once school was closed, we were serving only free and reduced meals. Michelle Bothy has done a fantastic job getting out there, communicating with our families, answering phone calls, responding to email, and making sure that our, our families were aware of what was going on. So she did an all-call to our free and reduced families as well on a weekly basis, sending out an email. And so what we found most effective is to basically have a grab-and-go service. We have had some, you know, people dedicated to go out there and serve lunch to our free and reduced families. And basically, on Monday, they, the families could pick up five meals for the week, and therefore allowing them to not have to come back out every single day to pick up a meal, but providing lunches that could sustain through the week, which also was the entree, milk, vegetables, fruits, and whatever we had available. And we were serving about a hundred and fifty to two hundred meals per week. And prior to this, we were about seven hundred and forty-one meals per day. Now, we continue to pay salary for approximately seventeen employees without collecting revenue. So this is the reason why we ran into a deficit. Next slide. So when we look at our enterprise fund, which is a fee-based program, we'll be looking at our 2019-20 estimated actuals and also our 2021 proposed budget. So under our estimated actuals, we are looking to deficit spend by one point three million dollars. Fortunately, we had a reserve of one, almost one point seven, which will leave about four hundred thousand in the ending fund balance or the reserve at the end of nineteen twenty. Next slide. So we just heard about ECDC opening up and the after-school program coming back. And knowing that families will be sending their children there, we haven't reflected that income. So possibly, depending on what happens with the, the remaining part of June, we'll see less of a deficit for 2019-20. But both programs have eighty-nine employees and have remained unpaid status without that enterprise fund generating any type of fee-based revenue. So when we look at our proposed budget, based upon the reduction of revenues on estimating, if what is happening today, social distancing, how many students we would be able to have in a room along with adults and the rooms available? And if we continue to keep the eighty-nine employees, we will deficit spend five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, leaving that ending fund balance at almost a negative a hundred and thirty-four thousand. Next slide. So what are our potential budget solutions? We will have to look at a reduction in the after-school program to accommodate the projected enrollment. And we will also have to look at a reduction in the early childhood development center. We will continue and monitor enrollment as students return to the programs and to monitor available rooms where we can accommodate the after-school program. And as the program increases, more students are coming back comfortable, depending on what is the recommendations and requirements, we hope to rehire staff and re-enroll as we enroll students. Looking into the June adoption for all funds, we will await, June fifteenth is the deadline for the budget to be completed and go to the governor for signature. We will look, because personal property taxes are not due until July fifteenth, have been delayed. We will look to August, which could be an August revise from the state. If the revenues, state revenues are not coming in where they're expecting, and determine if there are any additional reductions to districts' educational revenue. If it's significant, we will be bringing back to, to the board for approval or update for revisions. Otherwise, it will be done, the reflection would be at first interim. And we will look at our, our multi-year projection. Currently, we have budgeted at four and four and a half percent at a second interim. But we're going to be revisiting to see if those percentage increase in property tax revenues still are, are making sense. As we see, we are budgeting property tax revenue for 2021 at three and a half, so we have reduced it a little bit. But again, when we come back to you at the June board meeting, we'll hopefully have more solid information. And not only will we present to you the general fund, but we will be presenting to you all other funds. Next slide. Happy to answer any questions. Mark and I will be happy to answer any questions. And, and again, this is just for information, just to let you know where we are and what next steps we'll have to be taking a look at.
Kathy, Mark, thank you for a comprehensive presentation. Let's turn over to board members who have questions.
I've got a couple of questions. So I know you met with the assessor, property assessor in San Diego earlier in May. What have been the property tax remittances? You know, because people have had issues and, and have been able to defer the property tax, so that will affect how much we're getting. So can you address that?
So one of the, the cash collections was a lot less than it had been in previous years. And I think the numbers were typically, they were at ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent cash collections, but they were down to ninety-five percent. And they, of course, were, were trying to collect on that. It, it, just from going, having the experience from the Great Recession, it seems like it takes about a year or so for us really to feel the effect of that. So for example, back during the Great Recession, there was the Section Eights that individuals could apply for, which would reduce their assessed valuation. And so that took timing to, to hit the tax roll. Currently, the, the property, we should be getting another number from them, the beginning of June, with more information. But we, they are obligated to, to fund what our tax rule is. But we, they are obligated to, to fund what our tax rule is and not based upon collections. So that is the current ruling and hope that stays in place. But we, as always, we continue to monitor, monitor our tax receipts.
Okay. And then I know you were showing a reduction in three point six, I believe, FTEs in the STEAM Plus program. How many, you said those were due to you thinking decreased contributions to DMSEF. Was that all of that or because you're also going to have something due to reduced enrollment as well? Is that all for DMSEF or is that part of that reduced enrollment?
So right now, that is for a reduction in the contribution from DMSEF. I believe the, the current allocation for STEAM Plus is twenty-eight point eight. We certainly will bring a slide back and making sure to reflect that. But yes, we are recognizing a reduction in our enrollment. And that's where the reduction in the number of teachers by two is coming through. But we are looking at STEAM Plus to make sure that the sections are covered and that the program is covered too. So we're still awaiting to hear from DMSEF what the actual contribution will be.
Okay. I would like to see as much on a one-year, even if it goes into our reserve, and that's what we have reserved for cases like this, to be able to, you know, and say hold harmless, but to, you know, make sure, because they haven't had a chance, you know, it's been tough collecting our contributions at the time of the year. I'd like to keep as much of a STEAM Plus program intact as, as we can in next year. Just from my opinion, I don't know what the other board members would have. But I'd like to see that as much as we could on a one-year basis and hoping that they, they can come back and contribute next year. The only, the other thing I have, you said about the purrs and stirs. I know it's nice to have a reduction of what we're contributing, but those funds will have to be made eventually. So even though it's a savings today, it's a pay me bigger tomorrow. So I just have to be aware of that. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Kathy, just following up on the STEAM Plus point. I know last year that there is individual school sites had the opportunity to, you know, the parents from those school sites to, to top up the funding to make sure that they could be guaranteed certain number of positions. Is that still happening this year? And are we totally at the end of our fundraising for DMSEF?
Holly, do you want, do you know the status?
Sure. So they are, you know, still doing some fundraising and reaching out and, you know, to, to the community for those who can and wish to contribute. So that could be more than what they've anticipated at this point. As far as for next year, what was the rest of your part, the part of your question, Erica, regarding the STEAM Plus?
Just as far as, you know, for guaranteeing if a school achieves a certain number that they'll get their full allocation?
Yes, that has been an interesting conversation because some, some schools had, for example, already done their dog-a-thon, I believe three of them had. And so they raised a significantly more, a greater amount than the schools who have not had their major fundraising campaign. So there were comments about, yes, making sure that those schools actually had a certain amount of funding. And the same, out of the same, in the same conversation was a lot of agreement around there also needs to be equity and parity in the school district because, just because the pandemic happened in the midst of people's fundraising, it felt very, very, there was definite sentiment among the directors from the board, DMSEF board, that they didn't want there to be a lack of, you know, STEAM Plus at any of the schools because of that. So we're looking at that as district staff too.
Thank you. And I agree with Scott's approach as it is potentially a one-year situation that we're dealing with. So if we have to dip into the reserves to cover this STEAM Plus program, first we have to see what the state does as far as the fair share allocation that we have to pay and see how all the numbers come in. But it, it would be, it seemed like the right time to use our rainy day fund.
How much of a dip would that be, like for about three point sixteen teachers?
Um, maybe about six hundred thousand, maybe between six and eight hundred thousand, I think.
It's about a hundred and twenty thousand per teacher.
Oh, I thought it was more.
Other questions? Do you want?
Yeah, I just, I mean, it, it sounds like it'd be less than five hundred thousand. I mean, it's something that I, you know, that sounds reasonable to me for a, for a year. So I'd agree, I'd go along with, you know, what Eric and Scott were saying.
Catherine, the gentleman.
Yeah, I was just wondering about, could you reclarify the federal monies that we haven't been using? Are they to be used for a specific purpose? Can, and I guess they're rolling over into the next full year. Can you just talk a little bit more about those dollars?
Mark, would you like to talk about, is it the mental health, Mark?
Actually, a majority of the funds are Title I funds. So some of the schools have some supplemental programs after school for intervention services. And so some of that is being, still being performed, but not to the level that it was when we were in, in school.
That's why we haven't used that money?
Correct.
Okay. But we don't lose it. It goes into next year's spending budget. Okay.
This isn't an action item, is it?
No. Yeah, for your information.
Right. We're not determining whether to use reserve money to supplement anything at this point because we don't know what's coming down the pipe. So, you know, before we commit to, to use anything for anything, I think we need to take a step back and examine what we're in for and, and then make a conscious decision at that point. So I, I, I appreciate everybody's willingness to, to, to jump right in and, and say, we'll supplement whatever we need to before knowing everything that we need to supplement. So let's, let's take a step back, let's look at the forest and, and, and see what we can see. And we'll address it at that time. That's, that's just my thought.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's just guidance on where I would like to see them when they do give us a final budget coming in next month. And I'd like to see as much as we can to stabilize our programs and making sure that, that they're covered. I mean, that's what this first read is, for us to give us, give Kathy and Holly and Mark our opinions on where we think they should go with the budget. They're just giving us a kind of a, what it's going to look like.
But I, I, I agree with that. But I don't know, have all the, all the facts in front of us in terms of where the budget world is going to, going to send us. So in concept, I agree. I'm just, you know, I, I don't want to make any commitments at this point without knowing everything. So thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Oh, and thank you, Mark. I like the tie.
I'll just add that to the extent that we have a lot more information before we have to approve the budget. We could always have a budget workshop to go through some of these lineups and more details. We're not, you know, five hour, four and a half hours into our meeting. So that's an option if we get more information before the June board meeting.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now we are at item ten point two. And Kathy, I think you're still on for a board approval, wait, yeah, board approval award of contract for RFP nineteen twenty oh six due to transportation services.
Yes. So the district issued a request for proposal for student transportation services for the relocation of the Delmar High School students for the twenty twenty-one rebuild project. District staff recommends a twelve-month contract, which can be extended month to month if needed for student transportation with Student Transportation of America. And we are looking forward to moving forward with this agreement in order to work with STA on the protocol and developing the guidelines based upon what we know today. They've, are currently working on facial coverings and gloves and training their drivers and setting up new operating procedures and, and working on a brochure and making sure employees are trained. So we would like to be in partnership with them in order to make sure that if we move forward with this agreement, that we can have a protocol set in place when we are ready to transport our Delmar Heights students. So I'm just seeking approval of this agreement.
Kathy, can you just describe a little bit more about the plan for the transportation? Do we know anything now about where the bus stops will be? Or how, I mean, I understand we don't know how COVID will affect this. But setting that aside for a moment, the default option, how would that look?
Yeah, that's the critical part, is working with them because they are the experts. And we have worked on where students reside and making sure that it, where it makes sense to have a stops and the time that children would be picked up and dropped off. And so we are working on that protocol. Right now, we have two buses that we are anticipating using, but that was before the pandemic. So if that needs to change, then we want to be sure that we can do, make that change too. So it's really, you know, putting it in place now so we have time to plan so that we can get up and running and be able to, to communicate to our community exactly what would be happening and identifying those areas of where it's safe for pickup and drop off.
And what is your plan for collecting input from the families that will be affected by this?
So I'll probably discuss with Cavan about that, but this whole new program that we have is probably a great way to go. I haven't used it yet. So also, you know, and just putting out forms and basically saying, you know, are you interested? And, and determining where those families live. So we'll be working through that and hopefully sometime, haven't set a date yet, but hopefully won't be next month, but maybe sometime in, in July or August. I don't, haven't really made that determination yet, but I think it's a good idea to get started on that soon.
Does, does the contract have an out if for some reason the project doesn't move forward?
Yes. We, we have been working on, yes, with the agreement to provide us some flexibility depending on if we need the transportation or not and the timeframe of when we need the transportation.
And how many different bids did you get out of this and why, why this particular company?
Well, we had to go out twice. The first time, no one responded, which actually was surprising. The second time we went out, we had one other company respond. The other company that responded was more of a private car and it would be fiscally impossible for us to be able to, to be able to move forward with that. We also had the option of using a neighboring school district, which has provided us transportation in the past. But we think that moving with a vendor is the way to go because I believe that, that neighboring school district will probably be in the same situation, that they're going to have to have their buses to be able to transfer the students if in fact social distancing is in place.
And we'll be able, as Doug said, have eliminated the contract if we didn't need them come August due to some reason like we can't open the schools or the project doesn't move forward in, in some fashion? Or if social distancing is even more required, we can expand the number of buses on a, on the same type of fee schedule?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So Kathy, is this, for this company, is this like, are they school buses? Are they just like similar to other school district, school buses? Do they work with other school districts or is it like a private company or?
They do work with other school districts. Their buses are a little bit newer. They have seat belts, which was really nice. We reached out to charter buses, like a, like a San Diego type company. They really didn't want to commit to a daily type schedule. There were more events or sixth grade camp. So we, we did reach out. STA has worked with other districts. We have gotten referrals and they have been very good. I can say that the contract provides us some flexibility. And so I'm very comfortable with moving forward with them. We've been in conversation about, you know, we want to see, you know, our, how, what you can provide to, to our families and our community. And they've been very responsive and so we're trying to, to continue that conversation.
Okay. There are another questions. We need a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the contract.
A second. Catherine, roll call vote, member Wooden.
Aye.
Number Rathner?
Aye.
Number Mock?
Aye.
Number Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
And aye for me. So the motion is passed. Now, for ten point three, we have a speaker who is Maria Arias. So let's get her onto the call. This is item ten point three, board approval firm selections for RFQ nineteen twenty oh eight, DSA Project Inspection Services Pool. So first of all, before we take the speaker, Chris, do you want to present on this? And then we'll take the speaker and then we can discuss.
Yes, I would be happy to share. So item ten point three, the firm selection for the RFQ twenty twenty dash zero eight for the DSA Project Inspection Services Pool is a selection of a pool. We had eight submittals for this, for this pool. When we went through the process, we were looking to create a pool knowing that we will have projects coming up over the next few years. We will have our Pacific Hines Ranch School project coming up and then the Delmar Hills Academy of Modernization, Carmel Delmar. And so knowing that we would have a number of upcoming modernizations and projects, it, it made a lot of sense to create a pool and be able to go through proposals in that pool. Of those eight candidates' proposals that we received, four of them stood out. The noticeably, there was some separation between the top four and the other four. And so in looking at the work that we have and the scoring of those proposals, it made a lot of sense to bring four firms to the board that we could use in upcoming projects.
Okay, thank you. Let's just take Maria's comments and then we'll go to board discussion. You can go ahead, Maria. We can't hear you, but.
I, I do have a hand raised in the attendees, so I'm going to see if Maria might be on the phone as well and.
Maria? So.
Can you hear me? Yes, this is Maria. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
All right, yes. Good evening, board members and public. I am sorry, I chose the wrong agenda item. My comment should have been with four point two and six point two agenda items, but I'll take this time. First of all, thank you for the opportunity for me to give public comments. I'm speaking to you as a parent of special needs children and, and also as a taxpayer. I am very concerned on how Delmar Union School District or Self-Body Department is using taxpayer funds to file against children with special needs. I very much appreciate the opportunity to comment on how amid this coronavirus outbreak, one of your vendors, the law firm Fagan-Friedman and Full Frost, is suing children with special needs. This agency, FNF- This agency, FFNF, has filed multiple legal action against families with children with special needs to deny special education services. I understand that FFNF is the vendor of yours. My family had endured litigation for several years in order to obtain a free and appropriate public education for my children. In fact, my school district has rather litigate than provide services to my children. I am sure this has been with the advice from the legal firm, FFNF. So once again, as a taxpayer and a special needs parent, I urge your district and members and the district to evaluate how legal firms are filing against special needs families and children, especially during this hard times when we are under this pandemic and most of us are unemployed or have financial difficulties. As you know, going to due process is very difficult. It is very difficult for parents to litigate, so I ask you to please use those funds and really use the fine glass to find out how really most legal firms are fighting rather than providing education. I am for spending money on education, not litigation. And once I, once again, I am sorry that I put the wrong agenda item, but once again, thank you for the opportunity to provide comments at this point. Thank you very much. You have a good evening.
You too, and thank you for staying on the call and sorry for the confusion about that. Okay, so we're going to go back to the ten point three. So are there questions on that? Okay, if not, we need a motion.
Don't move.
One second. Thank you, Catherine. Roll call vote, member Wooden.
Aye.
Member Rathner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
An aye for me, so the motion passes. Ten point four is board approval firm selection for RFP nineteen twenty oh nine, Delmar Heights Rebuild, DSA Project Inspection Services. And back to Chris.
Similarly, we went out for a proposal for project inspection for the Delmar Heights School rebuilt. With where we are in time, we needed to, it made sense to do that specific proposal and then do the pool for the future projects. As we went through the pool, we had a number of proposals. We found a a top proposer did reference checks, and they checked out with high, high regard. And so we are excited to bring our potential, our proposal for a project inspector for this project.
Notice there's overlap with the list, but it's not the same list. Can you explain how that works?
They, they were two different, they were two different RFPs. We had an RFP specific to the Delmar Heights job, and then we had an RFPQ for the pool. And so there were certainly firms that may have thought, you know what, we're not, we don't have the capacity, or we don't want to propose, or for one reason or another decided not to propose on the Delmar Heights project, but did want to propose to be a part of it.
Okay, thanks. Are there other questions, Scott?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Thanks, Scott. Thank you, Catherine. Roll call vote, member Wooden.
Aye.
Member Rathner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
An aye for me, so the motion passes. Twelve point one, preliminary items for the June twenty twenty regular board meeting. Are there any? Okay, this brings us to the conclusion of the meeting, twelve point two, adjournment of the meeting, and one more roll call vote. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Don't move.
To adjourn.
Okay, I got a move from Doug. Do you want to start?
Sure.
Roll call vote, member Wooden.
Aye.
Member Rathner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
An aye for me, so the meeting is adjourned, and the motion to adjourn the meeting is passed, and the meeting is adjourned at nine oh six P M. Thank you, everybody, and good night.